Thank you to those here in person with us tonight, those watching via livestream, and those who are watching recording of this meeting. Our town mission statement, which helps guide our decisions tonight and into the future, you can actually read it on the back wall as well, is connecting our diverse community to an enhanced quality of life through innovative programs and services. Detective A. Johnson is our Sergeant-at-Arms for this evening's meeting. We thank you for your attendance. This evening, Councilmember Rao will be leading our invocation.
Thank you, Mayor. And this evening's invocation, I was supposed to give last meeting, but I switched, and so I'm honoring President Kennedy's legacy and the service of our veterans and talking about our country. Letters of power, heads in prayer. We gather this evening before Thanksgiving to reflect on our blessings, cherish the people around us, and extend a helping hand to those in need. We pray for any family who has lost a loved one or anyone battling illness, and we are grateful for any soldier in our armed forces who is defending our freedom here at home and abroad. On November 22nd, 1963, America lost a leader who inspired us to dream big and act boldly for the betterment of our nation. The anniversary of his assassination was last week. President John F. Kennedy's life was tragically cut short, but his legacy continues to shine as a beacon of hope, service, and unity, a light we need more than ever in today's divided times. Kennedy's call to service asks not what our country can do for you, but what we can do for our country, resonates deeply when we think of the men and women who have answered that call by serving in our own forces. Our veterans embody the selflessness and courage that President Kennedy so admired, standing as guardians of the freedom and ideals that define our nation. Today, as we reflect on his legacy, let us all also honor the sacrifices of our veterans who have kept the light of liberty shining through even the darkest times. They remind us that service is the foundation of our strength and that unity is the key to our resilience. In his presidency, Kennedy saw America as a great ship navigating turbulent waters, steered by the collective effort of all Americans. He believed that together we could overcome any storm by focusing on what united us rather than what divided us. We need more of that thinking today in our nation. Let's take inspiration from his vision and from the dedication of those who have served this country, committing ourselves to be our own lighthouses of unity and hope in our communities. Every step we take towards bridging divides, every effort to support those in need, and every gesture of gratitude to our veterans helps to illuminate our path forward. On this solemn anniversary, may we honor President Kennedy not only with words but with actions that strive for a more united nation. Together, we can ensure that his legacy will live on for a brighter future. I end this invocation with the inaugural address, words that inspired my own father-in-law to leave India with his wife and enlist in the United States Armed Forces in the Air Force in 1972. It was these words from our president, "The energy, the faith, the devotion which we bring to this endeavor will light our country and all who serve it, and the glow from that fire can truly light the world." These words inspired my father-in-law to make the journey to America, and it should remind us that we must always pray that the light and hope of our nation will burn brightly for millions around the world, that the glow that becomes the fire will send a message to anyone that we welcome you to come to this country to become a part of the great American story. We pray for everyone today, this evening, and wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. Amen. God bless America.
Amen. All who are able, please stand as we recite the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Before we adopt tonight's agenda, Town Council policy is to review and ensure there are no conflicts of interest or appearance of conflict of interest with any items on the agenda. Does anyone have anything they'd like to add? Seeing none, is there a motion and a second to adopt this evening's regular agenda?
I make a motion we adopt this evening's agenda.
Second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Rao, a second from Councilmember Robati. All those in favor of adopting this evening's regular agenda, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. There are six items on this evening's consent agenda. October minutes, resolution adopting Town Council 2025 meeting schedule, resolution and Capitol Project Ordinance approving Police RMS, FY25 Budget Ordinance amendments, resolution authorizing updates to Emergency Dispatch and Communications Service ILA, and resolution appointing the interim town clerk. Would any council member like to pull any item for discussion and separate vote? Or is there a motion and second to adopt the consent agenda?
I would like to pull the adoption of the interim town clerk off the agenda, off the consent agenda, please.
Okay. Is there anything else? Okay, I entertain a motion to adopt tonight's consent agenda with that item removed.
So moved.
Second.
Moved from Councilmember Rao, seconded by Councilmember Robati. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. So I would like to ask Gran Zudima, or please ask your questions on that item.
This isn't a question. I just wanted to thank Erin Hudson for stepping up as the interim town clerk. I know that means that you're doing two jobs instead of one job, and we really appreciate the fact that the transition has been seamless and that we've got everything we need for tonight's meeting. And I'm sure that's from all of us.
I believe we concur. Would you like to make a motion to adopt that item 6F?
I would now like to make a motion to adopt item 6F.
I'll second.
I have a motion from Councilmember Robati, a second from Councilmember Johnson. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously, 7-0. Thank you very much to our interim town clerk. Administrative reports are provided for information only. Does council have specific questions regarding the Morrisville Smart Shuttle Year Three Review and/or the FY25 Q1 Financial and Budget Reports submitted? I'd like to recognize Councilmember Fender at this time, please.
Yeah, I have some questions regarding the Smart Shuttle report. You knew that was coming, didn't you, Caleb?
Sorry, everybody. A little shocked. Yeah, I guess so. Caleb Arredondo, Transportation Planner for the Town, Morrisville Smart Shuttle Program Manager.
Yeah, so I'm just looking at my notes I did last night. So in your report, can you bring up that, the charts? So in the report, it references like two reasons why people cannot get a seat. Either it is unavailable or the shuttle is filled, that there are not enough seats.
That's correct.
So how often does that happen?
I do not have statistics on the number of occurrences for either example, but I can say based on anecdotal experience, it's most likely going to be the time, you know, the timeliness of it, the fact that 60 minutes is your cue, so to speak, and going beyond that would cause you to receive a seat unavailable message.
Okay. Yes, so the report shows that we have grown ridership over the past three years. It was, it is a bit concerning that the seat unavailable has the percentage has gone from 5% to 7.25% in between second year and third year. And then on Saturday, you know, the last, this last year, seat unavailable on Saturdays is 18.3%, which is quite a bit. My concern is, is for people that, because I know this is the case for me. I mean, when I, when I've wanted to use the shuttle, it's on weekends. And because it's so often when I try to book the shuttle, it's not available, I give up. It doesn't, it doesn't, I don't even think about it anymore. Now hopefully, that's not the case for the majority of the people, but that's my concern is that with that high, and that, that increase in percentage unavailable is with you guys changing that, the algorithm from 45 minutes to 60 minutes.
Absolutely.
So I know the second shuttle is in the works, working with Forge Nano. Is that a done deal? Is that a done deal?
That is a great question. So the Forge Nano funding is completed. We will have a Saturday vehicle starting on January, I think the first Saturday in January is January 4th. So we'll have an additional Saturday vehicle bringing the service capacity up to weekday service.
Okay.
Which should alleviate a lot of the issues of seat unavailable messages. The Sunday vehicle is a little, a little behind the Saturday vehicle, so we'll have that one up and running in the spring, probably between, if I had to guess, like mid-April through the end of May. That's, I know that's a long window, but we don't have that date shored up yet, so I don't unfortunately have a specific date for that one.
Where's the funding for that second shuttle coming from?
So both of the additional shuttles for both Saturday and Sunday will be coming from that Forge Nano funding.
Okay. That's great. Will you guys be doing any sort of communication, advertising when that happens?
Absolutely. So that's a good point. You know, one of the factors that we have to consider with advertisement, advertisement is that we already are at capacity right now. I'm picking up that you may be referring to, hey, Saturday and Sunday will add capacity. And so we certainly want to let folks know, probably through the app, we'll work with our communications department to find the best method of communicating that, but we do want to be thoughtful in that communication.
Right. Yeah, I can see the need for that, but, and that's what I'm speaking of, is for that advertise or communicate out to the public that there is now a second shuttle for Saturday when that occurs, and then Sunday when that, when that happens. All right. That's all I had. I appreciate your report. Thank you.
Thank you.
Did anyone else have any questions for Mr. Allred? Keep up the great work.
Thank you so much. Happy holidays.
Happy holidays. We are now at presentation section of the agenda. At this time, we invite Councilmember Rao to read the proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday.
Before I read this proclamation, I have you on the last meeting of attending this local entrepreneurship meeting. I attended the NCA ideas summit in Charlotte, and what was amazing, there was a presentation from the Secretary of State's office that said that if we increase small business and startup performance by 5%, we create 24,000 jobs in North Carolina, which is quite amazing. So, you know, I just wanted to throw that out there. Small business employs 1.7 million citizens in North Carolina, so we're really appreciative that our town is supporting small business. So this is a proclamation recognizing Small Business Saturday. Whereas Small Business Saturday is an annual event devoted to championing small businesses and communities nationwide, established by American Express in 2010. This occasion is observed every year on the Saturday following Thanksgiving. And whereas, according to the U.S. Small Business Administration, there are 34.7 million small businesses in the United States, constituting 99.7% of firms with paid employees, generating 61.1% of net new jobs since 1995, and employing 45.9% of the private sector workforce. And whereas, just 68 cents of every dollar is spent in the Morrisville small business and remains within our local community, stimulating more business activities in the purchase of local goods and services. Each dollar spent generates an additional 48 cents in the local economic impact, furthering enhancing the community's financial well-being. And whereas, 59% of U.S. consumers aware of the Small Business Saturday shop or ate at a small, independently owned retailer restaurant on Small Business Saturday 2023. And whereas, the purpose of Small Business Saturday is to reinforce the awareness among consumers about their pivotal role in supporting the prosperity of small businesses in their community. And whereas, such an annual observance invigorates shopping and dining locally, producing tax, sales tax dollars within the community, and contribute toward improving public education parks, streets, and supporting essential services such as firefighting and public safety. And whereas, Morrisville takes great pride in acknowledging and honoring our local small businesses for their priceless contributions in creating jobs and valuable services, how they boost the local economy and preserve our communities' state of character. Now therefore, the Town Council or the Town of Morrisville is hereby recognized November 30th, 2024, as Small Business Saturday in the Town of Morrisville. We urge the residents of our community and communities across the country to support small businesses emerging on Small Business Saturday and throughout the year. Signed, this 12th day of, this 12th day of November, 2024.
And we'd like Tiffany McNeil, our development director, to come on up to accept it.
Thank you. And we're so glad to have you aboard and looking forward to you growing more small businesses in Morrisville.
Thank you, Mayor and Town Council for recognizing Small Business Saturday. With more than 300 small businesses right here in the Town of Morrisville, they are a very vital part of our community, driving economic growth. And so my ask of each and every one of you is to come out on Small Business Saturday and support your local business, but don't just stop there. Continue throughout the rest of the year. Thank you.
Next, we invite Will Glenn, Communications and Outreach Director, to come forward to recognize the most recent Morrisville 101 graduates and have them come up to the dais.
Good evening. Will Glenn, Communications and Outreach Director. It is my distinct honor to stand before you this evening and recognize our Morrisville 101 graduates. For those who don't know, Morrisville 101 is a resident academy that teaches residents all about Morrisville's government. It's consecutive five weeks, and they saw just about every department. We got to get HR in next time, David, we got to get you in. But everybody else, they saw them. This was an extremely engaging group. They came early, they stayed late. They had very good questions, and they really engaged with our presenters, even during and after class. So we're going to miss seeing you all on Wednesday nights. You got to come back and see us. See us soon. If I can have you all line up here on this aisle, left-hand side here on the outside, I'm going to call your names up one by one. You'll get your certificate, and we'll have a photo with our Town Council afterward. And Tiffany's handing certificates out before me there. All right. Jashi Abarajan. If you can just follow that way to where Mayor Call is. Yvonne Davis. So our next two aren't here this evening. I'm still going to call their names for the record. Aruna Garuda and Visa Garunda. Next is Pamela Hoteling. Mr. Raj Deep Carmaker. Raj Deep? I thought I saw him back there. Okay. Driti Mokapadhyay. Her daughter came to Team Morrisville 101. She told mom how great it was, so she rolled in the adult version. Just shameless club, I'll put that in there. And Suresh Narayan. And he's not here, but I'll announce his name, Mr. Daniel Patterson. Lynn Pham. Ava Runyon. Sean Rushton. See Sean? He's not here this evening either. Vincent Suderson. And Ms. Samantha Warren. Let's give them all a round of applause, please. If we can get all council to come down for the photo, please.
tell their friends, and their friends are in the next class. So thank you all very much for all your time doing that. And thank you to staff, who spent a lot of time on Wednesdays preparing and giving the classes. Really important. At this time, we'd like to invite David Hacker, Human Resources Director, forward for our Mr. Hacker, how long have you been with us now?
Going on two months.
Two months. So you're no longer counting the days.
No, correct. We're into months. That's accurate.
Welcome again.
Yeah, thank you. Good evening, David Hacker, Human Resources Director. Thank you for having me this evening, although it's only been, you know, about 60 days. I'm very excited to talk with you all this evening and give you a, you know, an overview of sorts of the great work that the Human Resources Department does here at the Town of Morrisville. I certainly can't necessarily speak to historical data beyond my 60 days personally, but I have some good information to share with you this evening as we kind of talk about the details of HR. So what you'll see before you is, first, the mission statement or the goal that the Human Resources Department strives for daily. And I would, I would note that, you know, we break that into basically four components. To provide personnel programs and policies that are fair and legal, that meet all regulatory requirements. Ensure comprehensive benefits, plans, and competitive pay that align with our market, which obviously, as you all know through many discussions, can be very challenging at times to stay in sync or in touch with market as that continues to develop, evolve, and unfortunately, increase. Promote a workplace wellness to ensure our environment is the best available for staff. And that's comprehensive of both what you would think of in terms of individual wellness for employees, but also safety. Safety and risk is a component, a key component, of what the Human Resources Department does here on a daily basis. And then retain a skilled and diverse workforce that meets the needs of our town and its residents. So of course, one of the key components of any HR function or group is that, you know, we are at the forefront of attracting and then on the fore-end of retaining the most talented workforce possible. You'll see here sort of an image, just for those that feed better off of imagery of the breakdown. We are a very small but mighty team, so unfortunately, this evening, more than 50% of my staff are out because of holiday. One is cruising the seas and the other is with family, but when you only have four of you, that's pretty easy to come up on 50% quite quickly. So our structure is based on, you know, myself in the HR director role. We are lucky to have an assistant director and Nate Mayer. We have a risk manager, someone devoted, you know, completely and fully, although he does often segue out and help us with some non-safety and risk-related tasks within HR, but Chuck Queen is specifically focused on, you know, making sure that the town is as safe as possible for employees on a daily basis. And then sort of the glue of our department is April Speed. Unfortunately, April's not here this evening either, but April manages a lot of the daily transactional work. So she is assisting all of our departments with the resources to talent, you know, track and obtain, onboarding, benefit changes, anything you can think of from a transactional perspective. April keeps us very organized and on target for those things. Amongst the four of us, we have 49 combined years of experience in public service. Although I'm new to Morrisville, I'm not new to public service, so I did contribute to that as well as, you know, the length of tenure that we have in both Nate and Chuck and then April as well. We have 65 years combined experience in HR application, so that's in any field of HR, any experience relative to HR application combined, we have over 65 years. We have one certified manager of environmental safety and health, and I'll let you guess who that is. Of course, that's Chuck. And then we have two senior certified professionals in human resource. So both Nate and I have either our SPHR or our SHRM SCP, which are the highest designations for certification in human resources. Erin, you gonna, can I progress or do you have to progress me? Thank you. To talk about some of the key accomplishments from the HR department, I kind of broke that into six segments here for you. The first that I want to share with you this evening, or kind of highlight for you all, is the, what I would label as the advanced benefit planning. And there are several things that sort of make up what I mean by that, enhanced benefit planning. A large portion of what we do annually, but also throughout the year, is to keep abreast of those benefit changes that impact our employees, but also impact our budget. So this is a very large, you know, any type, any labor or budget expense is usually the largest for an organization as far as dollar value. So one thing that we keep an eye to is making sure that we're maintaining the most competitive benefit plan as possible, but that we're also mindful of that cost that is incurred at the town level. So these are just some of the items that are important in this process. So one thing that we incorporated prior to my arrival is anyone that participates in the North Carolina Ledgers Program, which is the retirement program or credit program for retirement. We have an ability to award them some level of benefit earnings to attract them to come to us. So, you know, you can, you get a value for those service years that you've had other places when it comes to accruals, which is just one benefit that we offer that we're in that work-life balance arena. We've simplified our wellness program. We got quite a bit of feedback from employees last year and prior years that we were making the wellness component of the health insurance program more complex and difficult than it ought to be and less meaningful than it should be. So one thing that we did is we modified that wellness program to include meaningful contributions or meaningful actions, you know, making sure that you're getting your preventative screenings, making sure that you're, you know, contributing or going to your annual wellness checks, but perhaps we removed some of the requirements in order to keep that incentive, I'll call it, to maintain a lower cost on your premium. We took away some of those things that were more of the computer-based learning trainings that weren't interactive and didn't have as much of that daily meaningful engagement. We targeted EAP, and what I mean by that is we have a very robust and plentiful EAP program that extends to the employees that are here as members of the team of the Town of Morrisville. But just recently, we launched a targeted EAP specific to public safety, specifically in our police department. So they have very unique needs based on the types of work that they do and the things that they may see in the field, and we are garnering those levels of experience specific in public safety and in the police force, and we're targeting how we maintain their wellness. Mental health is something that's not spoke of as freely or as often as it should be specifically in police work, so we're finding ways to include support and touchpoints with our police force. So we're finding ways to include support and touchpoints with our police force that allows them to access those various needs, whatever they may be that they have. So that could be anything from, you know, support and mental wellness, or it could be in financial support, various things. But we're targeting, and we're going to do this hopefully in this next year with our fire service as well, where we're working with those departments to meet their specific needs that are quite different than just maybe somebody in another department within the town. And then the other one that I want to mention briefly, but is very impactful, is the N-ship Program that we participate in. We were one of the founding members. The prior town manager really harnessed and sort of took this on from the description of the N-ship leadership from Gallagher. It's our benefit partner, and it's really benefited us. Not only did it sort of stabilize our costs during years where our plan might have seen a little more activity than other years, it stabilized our costs from year to year. So in a market where you are typically seeing, for our size of an organization, double-digit or more increases, and when I say double-digit, I mean, of course, 10%, but upwards of 20% to 30% marginal increases in healthcare costs, we are very, very stable in single-digit costs, almost unheard of, and 2% to 3% increases. So that program that we elected to participate some years ago has really developed into a great benefit for us, no pun intended, that is benefiting us from the cost perspective. N-ship is now looking at other pools, so this is an insurance pool. It's specific to healthcare coverage, medical healthcare coverage for town employees, but they're also exploring options in dental, vision, and other ancillary products. As we're seeing that, you know, that leverage or that benefit that we get by doing this collectively with other municipalities, I expect to see N-ship offerings expand and be able to offer more in terms of stability and savings for the Town of Morrisville as well. The second block that you'll see there in the purple color is our Annual Compensation Analysis. So this is an annual activity or an annual exercise. I label this an accomplishment because of what it brings to us. So this is that element from the first slide where I talked about ensuring that we remain market competitive and that we're retaining the top talent for the positions to meet the residents' needs here in Morrisville. Without this Annual Compensation Analysis, we likely would fall detrimentally behind. Right now, we have just completed, last year we completed a one, the first year of a three-year cycle. And what I mean by that is we segment the town sort of in thirds and review those departments each cycle. So each town or each department, excuse me, isn't necessarily reviewed annually, but they're reviewed on a three-year span with the exception being in Fire and Police, because we want to make sure that we're, you know, remaining very competitive there. We do have a strong focus on making sure that not only are we looking at the existing compensation ranges, but that we're taking time to review positions, making sure that if they've evolved or they've enhanced in terms of responsibility or, you know, makeup, that we're taking the opportunity to relabel those, reclassify those, or retitle those based on those changes as time has progressed. And we see that often, you know, we see that, you heard this evening about the Smart Shuttle Program. That's certainly an area where this year, planning is one of the departments that is included in the review, that is part of our review, to look at that program and that position specifically, because we're sort of on the forefront of that, being a leader in that area, that, you know, it's sort of hard to market compare. So we've got to make sure that we're reviewing that job and those duties within that job and that they're remaining in step with the classification and pay. The third block that you'll see there is the Comprehensive Personnel Policy Update. So council just went through that process and did an approval of those updates. This is something that should be done almost regularly. So a Personnel Policy Manual, I describe as a living document. It isn't intended to be set in stone forever. Laws and regulatory compliance, issues change daily, and as a result of that, that document has to be nimble and be able to change as well. So in doing so, we looked enhanced consistency, update for application, you know, application of whatever those regulatory changes may be, and just application of our own policies to make sure that they continue to make sense and they're the most useful for the success of our business in terms of, you know, managing the town and the services provided. And then to make sure that we review for a fair and balanced approach. You know, a policy definitely finds its age as well, and as that happens, you need to make sure that you're, you know, reviewing that and you're making sure that what might have been fair and balanced some time ago is continuing to be fair and balanced, based on not only those regulatory changes, but just, you know, a general application. The orange block that you'll see there is the Implementation of a Benefits Admin System. So we're looking to enhance this a little further even, and you'll see that on a later slide here. But we did roll out Employee Navigator, which is a single system entry. So rather than a new employee or an existing employee during open enrollment, having to fumble through, you know, stacks of paper and filling out and not being able to read handwriting and guessing on entries and spelling names wrong and having the number of a social security entered, the social security number entered incorrectly, allowing for a benefit admin system allows for consistency and it allows for, I won't say error-proof entry, but certainly less room for human entry error. So when a person is entering that and you're entering your dependents' information or your address or those vital pieces of information that we all know if they're wrong and you go to the pharmacy or you go to your physician, your insurance denies your claim, right? If it's not accurate. So the importance of that information being entered correctly is important to not only the town, but to the employees and the dependents of those employees. So having them enter that and have ownership over that data has improved that consistency in that application. It also allows for auto-feed to carriers, so as people change their benefit or as new employees onboard or employees retire or move on to other opportunities, it allows for us to update that carrier, that carrier relationship or that enrollment with the carrier more quickly, which, you know, is a cost savings. A lot of times with carriers, there's a clawback provision where if you haven't made that edit and it's past 30 days, they won't do a retro, you know, calculation or retro credit on your bill. So this is very important to make sure we're capturing those timely and those changes are happening. It's also important when we have, and you'll see in our video that we're going to show for you this evening, that when there's a life change event, a birth as an example, it's important that those updates get made timely because that new baby is reliant upon that update for their care. And then finally, ACA compliance. So when we're talking about the very robust legislation that is the Affordable Care Act, there's a lot of reporting requirements roped up or wrapped up into the Affordable Care Act, and there's a lot of tracking that needs to take place as a result of the Affordable Care Act. So having a benefit admin system allows us to track and apply the provisions of affordable care, specifically when it comes to the cost that we're tracking, so that we make sure that we're, you know, in compliance with the affordability provision. And then there's also provisions of tracking, you know, variable hour employees to do measurement periods to make sure that they are offered insurance when they ought to be. The fifth block that you'll see there is pretty self-explanatory. As you all know, we were lucky enough to add many positions in scope of the size of our organization as a town, but many positions in terms of position number that had been added in the past. So we were in a growth-oriented mindset. We were, you know, prepared for that, and we focused on expanding search and exposure. And we're going to be doing more of that into this year as we look to how you, in the HR world we call it, you should be hunting and not fishing. That's a very easy analogy. So you don't want to cast a net and hope that you produce your fish, but you want to be out in the waters hunting for those fish. And that's the terminology or the analogy a lot of folks use when they're talking about recruitment. You know, you want to be out there actively, not passively, hoping that the right candidate falls into your lap, but that you're on the hunt, so to speak, for the right person when that opportunity presents for your organization. So we're going to be doing or shifting our focus to a little more of a proactive recruitment approach. And then finally, safety promotion. And this is very important, and this is sort of something that we joke in our department that this is a very boring component of human resources, but this is a very impactful component from the town perspective. So our Experience modifier is .71. And basically, what an Experience modifier is, in the most layman terms I can present to you, is that is how often or how large of a claim activity that we have when it comes to, say, like our workers' compensation program. So because we have an Experience modifier of .71, it actually means that we get an applied discount to our premium of 29%. That is a significant discount percentage in general, but probably one of the largest I've seen in my career in terms of applied discount for Experience modifier. And what that means is that our departments do a great job of ensuring that their employees, whatever they may be doing, are doing it safely, and that our Risk Manager, Chuck, is implementing programs and educational components that allow them to remain mindful of their safety while they're out working, and that those programs are put into good application. And that's very important because of the savings, but also because we are lucky enough not to have repetitive injury or unfortunately, in some instances, death as a result of some of these workplace injuries that take place. That unfortunately does happen often in employers. So we're not only grateful that we have this discount, but that this discount, you know, basically correlates to the fact that our folks are safe while they're working. Influences. So here, I wanted to talk to you about some of the things that we look at when we are, you know, including or thinking through what we do in HR. So standardizing policies and practices. We continue to establish formal policies and practices that guide administration of what we call people operations. So that goes back to that Personnel Policy. We ensure that our standards align with our core values. You hear a lot about the four core values, and hopefully, if we get the opportunity to do this again next year, I'll be coming before you to talk about implementation of a new performance evaluation process, some interview tools that we're looking to deploy, and all of those have components that focus specifically on the core values of the town, the dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation. We have a renewed focus with consistency under new HR leadership. So as you all pointed out, I've been here a little under 60 days, so that's a new component or new influence to our HR department. We continue to develop the right HR administration structure to meet the growing needs of the town. This is both in size and delivery. So we are currently, in my department, exploring, discussing, and preparing to implement some changes in the workflows that we have to allow more service delivery at the department level, so that the HR team is more of a partner, more of a business or strategic partner to the departments, specifically on things like retention, recruitment, you know, wellness, those types of things. And hopefully, I'll have an opportunity to share some of those advancements with you as well. Our team, we have a highly skilled team, knowledgeable staff. I spoke to that earlier with the first slide, and a team that's rooted not only in HR practice that is very important, but specifically in public service experience, because so many things that apply in the HR world apply a little bit differently when it comes to the public service world. So it's important that we have folks that have that knowledge and that experience. Time in response is another influence, you know, balancing not just the time sensitivity of something, not being quick about it, that's very important, but we have to make sure that the quality is there as well, so that the quality of our work is in balance with our time sensitivity and the response to those needs. And that we're planning and not reacting, right? So we're gonna, we are working towards being more of a planned department, so that we're foreseeing things as much as possible, and we're not just waiting for things to happen and then responding or reacting to those. And then, of course, the implementation and use of technology. We are currently in the process of exploring a full use of our financial system. It's, many of you know it as Munis or ERP or Tyler Technologies, any three of those. The HR team currently uses a component of that, but we also use many other sprinkled systems to kind of make that whole process complete. We're looking at maybe integrating completely into Tyler or expanding the current use of our systems, whichever makes most sense for our operations. And then we just recently implemented a centralized inbox, so all employees in the town or applicants in the town can respond to an inbox that is linked to all of us, so that the response time is quicker. So if something, as an example, that April might be working on, she's out cruising the seas right now with her family, if something that she would be normally responsible for is sent to her, we no longer have that worry because we're directing some of those more general inquiries to an HR inbox where, while April's out cruising, I, myself, Nate, or Chuck are all in that inbox as well, and we can respond to something more timely than waiting for her to return. Current initiatives and looking ahead, we are looking at recruitment branding. It's very important to have a brand when it comes to your recruitment, as much as it is to have a brand when it comes to your town or organization. And I mentioned that we are getting ready to deploy a revised format in which we support recruitment specifically a little differently, and that will provide enhanced services to our departments, essentially taking some of the things that maybe they have responsibility for on a daily basis that are more HR-related and having the HR professionals support that differently than they do now. We are working diligently and just had a first blush presentation with our leadership team and supervisors on a Leadership Academy. That's a very broad term, and that term might be used differently in terms of how we label it, but essentially, it is a module-based, you know, collection of courses that we can offer to folks to become prepared for leadership, to become better leaders, and then to also assist others in becoming leaders, you know, sort of becoming the alumni that facilitate that next phase of leadership for us as a town. Increased efficiency via technology use, I touched on that on the Influences slide, but we're looking at a one-use system model versus a multi-use system model and enhancing the use of that system model. So as an example, right now, we still have a very paper-based or individual-based process for onboarding. If we go to this one system or single system used-based model, a lot of that onboarding will become more of an automated experience for applicant new employees. And then enhanced delivery or training and workforce development. So we are in the process of working towards, we actually just scheduled a focus group to look at a LMS program, which is a learning management system, so that we were able to deliver, you know, training in a computer-based format as well as a classroom-based format. And the workforce development piece that you see there, it's becoming increasingly important that as we're recruiting, we're recruiting at a more younger, developed age. In my last life, I was going into middle schools to do exposure days for students so that they understand what, you know, is available to them as part of that employer. A good example is planning. I had a discussion with one of our planners last week, who he fortunately had an experience in high school and knew what planning was, but I'm sure if you polled exiting seniors from high school that are getting ready to make that decision about what they want to do for the rest of their life, most of them probably have never even heard of it. So we're going to look at exposure programs like that through workforce development and some other programs in workforce development that allow us to build that sort of bench strength of folks that have interest in public service work. These are just a few facts and figures from an HR perspective. So in the last, in the current calendar year, excuse me, we've had a total of 82 resignations. That number is made up of 49 part-time resignations, 24 full-time resignations, and then I did slot out separately nine retirements. So nine individuals have retired officially from the Town of Morrisville, and those individuals met the definition of retirement. So we did have, you know, maybe one or two individuals who retired, they're no longer working anywhere, but they didn't meet our definition of official retirement. So they would be categorized in that resignation. All the other resignations are just individuals that have left the town for some reason, you know, there's, that's not, I'm not breaking those down by voluntary or involuntary or anything like that. Those are just individuals that have exited from employment in one way or another from the Town of Morrisville. We have had 110 new hires. Of those, 51 of those are part-time, and 59 of them are full-time. We have a lot of part-time folks in Parks and Rec, which tends to make up a lot of the incoming and exiting numbers that we have, but we did have many full-time folks. I think that's a great thing to look at as an indicator of growth. When you have more full-time new hires than you have part-time new hires, that typically means that's because you've expanded, you've increased. It can mean that you've had some exits as well, which is also not a problem, but you usually don't see the number of full-time positions as new hires overtaking the part-time unless it's due to growth. And then our launch sessions. So launch is our new employee orientation. We've had 17 of those this calendar year, and that has been a total of 204 hours spent orienting new employees. orienting new employees. These are just some instances of our values that I talked about earlier in action. So you'll see under dedication, that's a photo of Nate during COVID continuing to facilitate new hire orientation. You know, I, I know in a lot of industries that the time just doesn't pause for these types of things, but it certainly doesn't pause when you're working in public service, especially in public safety. So we had to continue to have those mechanisms by which we could onboard employees as needed. In the purple category, you'll see that's Chuck, our risk manager. Chuck took it upon himself after the devastating hurricanes and well, we had a piece of that hurricane, but the devastation that was felt in western North Carolina, Chuck organized a drive that initially started as a drive for our employees, but expanded based on community interest to the community. And we had a collection day and sent a lot of great supplies to western North Carolina. And then courtesy, you'll see a photo there of April working with a, a new hire and onboarding, going over benefits information, which is very complex and very detailed. Anyone who's ever interfaced with April will find that she is always pleasant and always willing to help. And then the last slide you'll see there was just from this, a recent meeting that we had that I mentioned earlier with our leaders and supervisors where I had the distinct pleasure of presenting multiple concepts. Of those was our professional growth plan, a revised thought process around performance evaluations and application of those and simplifying and making those more meaningful. And then a discussion around the leadership academy that I talked about earlier. So this is a slide for you all to have a little fun with sort of who in HR we're talking about. So on the left-hand side, I'm just going to go through these really quickly. The first one there you see says lives for the adrenaline rush through activities like skydiving and rappelling. Anyone want to take a guess on who that might be?
Yeah.
Ah, good, Chuck. He called himself the risky risk manager. I told him I wasn't going to let him put that on the slide, but that's, that is definitely Chuck. The second point there that you'll see aspires to own a coffee shop and/or a brewery, but does not drink coffee and hates the taste of beer.
No.
Good guess. But no, that is actually Nate, Nate Mayer.
Yeah.
He likes the ambiance and the feel of both coffee shops and breweries, but hates the taste of both. If given the chance, this one I probably gave away.
Yes, she did.
I shouldn't have done that earlier. If given the chance would have, would live life on a cruise ship, traveling the world and dominating in pickleball.
April.
That's April. And then of course, the last is probably a giveaway as well, but I once built a library on the island of Dominica and have waited, I've had the, the pleasure of waiting on more than 15 well-known celebrities. I worked in a restaurant all through high, well, end of high school, but really the beginning of college and it was just situated in a place where we had a lot of celebrity traffic. So I've waited on folks from country music stars to movie stars to actually the one that I thought was the coolest was if anyone remembers Saved by the Bell, I waited on Mr. Belding. He now works for the EPA, but I did get the chance to spend some time talking to him. So, but that's just a fun game for you to kind of get to know the folks that support HR. We don't come before town council as often as a lot of the other departments. It's very limited. Brandon and I had a discussion about that the other day. This may be the last time I'm up here unless we do this again next year. So we don't get the chance to interact with all of you and certainly as much with the public as, as many of our other departments, but we are here regularly supporting all of the work that happens throughout the town and we have a pretty far stretch and touch. And I think that the video we're going to show you will certainly give you some insight to that. And unless you have questions specifically about the presentation, we'll, we'll lead into the video, but we jokingly say the, the motto we live by is just keep calm and call HR. Whatever it is, we'll figure it out because guess what? Normally it's not initially or immediately our problem, we're just helping you. So we can keep calm, right? For the individuals that are dealing with it, it feels like the, the world's on fire, but for us, it's pretty easy to give you advice and to be a support when we're not having to deal with the immediate impact of something operationally.
I don't see any questions.
Great. Let Aaron share our video.
Hello, this is the town of Morrisville's Human Resources Department. House following up from your interview with our team and calling to extend you a conditional offer of employment.
Before I explain the pre-employment process, I wanted to take a minute and ask for any feedback related to your interview experience with the town of Morrisville.
Our department supports and ensures a balanced and equitable selection process and are always open to feedback.
Could you tell us how old you are? I'm sorry, what I meant to ask you was, could you tell us the years of experience you have related to this role you've applied for?
I have eight years of experience.
Thank you for the feedback. I'll make sure that I pass that on to the interview team.
It's great to hear that our staff were appropriate and professional.
Ensuring a safer workplace and community, an extensive pre-employment process is conducted through criminal background and motor vehicle record checks.
Drug screen and education verification.
Beyond the competitive market pay that I've already mentioned, I wanted to share with you some of the benefits the town offers its employees.
It is our goal at the town of Morrisville to be supportive of your needs in the workplace while providing benefits to also support your personal life.
Town of Morrisville offers medical, dental and vision coverage for eligible employees.
As well as a host of other ancillary benefits.
Like accident insurance and long-term disability insurance.
As I noted, Human Resources is here to support you in all of your life changes throughout your time as a member of the town of Morrisville team.
Have you applied for your paid parental leave? I'm FMA. And just a reminder, you only have 30 days when a date of the baby is born to make changes to your medical insurance. I know it's a lot, don't worry, I have everything right here.
You also certainly feel supported and understanding that these options can also make the right choice for yourself.
You also find that the town of Morrisville provides opportunities for professional growth.
Through training and development and Human Resources leaves our safety at work program.
I got you buddy. I know that I've covered a lot, but you'll learn about all of this in our new employee orientation we call launch.
HR coordinates launch in support of our town departments to give you the best understanding of our values.
The best part of working for the town of Morrisville is having the opportunity to impact a community of people and support lives where people work, live and play.
As an example, the Human Resources Department organized a supply drive to support the western North Carolina neighbors whose lives and communities were recently devastated.
One last thing I want to be sure we cover.
Is that we participate in the local government employees retirement system.
The town provides an additional 5% contribution into a 401K plan on behalf of each employee.
I know it's in the distant future and you're likely dreaming about your retirement somewhere warm and sandy, but it's good to know that your future is secure.
If all this sounds good, we can move forward with getting you onboarded with our team.
Hello?
Hello? Brandon?
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 Hello?
Brandon?
What, what, yes, David, I want the Morrisville position. It sounds like I can make a difference there.
That's great, however, you're late for launch and people are waiting to meet you.
Launch.
Oh, yeah, okay, let's go.
Thank you very much. Great team and as he said, really the underpinning of recruiting and then maintaining a great quality of life for our staff. So thank you very much, David and Nate and the whole team. Next item on the agenda is item 10, public address. Ms. Hudson, do we have anyone signed up for public address?
No one was signed up to speak.
Okay. Is there anyone here in the room who wishes to address this body for up to three minutes on any subject of your choosing? Okay, seeing none, we will move on. Item 11, public hearings. We have one public hearing for a resolution adopting the 2024 Wake County Multi-Jurisdictional Hazard Mitigation Plan on this evening's agenda. Nathan Lizinski, Fire Chief will now brief the council on the item after saying it five times fast.
No, we're not going to do that. Good evening, Council Mayor, thank you for having me. Nathan Lizinski, Fire Chief. That was an amazing video, by the way. I, one of the things, well Nate's leaving, but I would have put on there, it's fascinating that one of your HR individuals loves sloths, addicted to sloths, have no idea why. Their sloth, the office is full of sloths, you'll have to ask them next time you see them. But it is sort of fascinating what you find out about your coworkers. Yep, that was him. So yep, here to talk about the Wake County Hazard Mitigation Plan. A little bit of a background on where that mitigation plan comes from. So in 1988 FEMA along with the federal governments passed the Stafford Act. That was really the first opportunity for us to sort of really wrap our mind around what a response to a, like a holistic response to a, an emergency is. Historically, we just worried about responding to call, like to the actual emergency, but we sort of took, looked and said, well, what can we do in addition to just responding? So we thought about preparedness mitigation and then the recovery part. So in 1988, they passed the Stafford Act and what that did is it really allowed the federal government to do two things. It gave the president the authority to declare an emergency and it sort of built the framework to allowing us to sort of get ahead of emergencies so we're not just retroactively responding to them. So that's where the mitigation and the preparedness side came from. So in 2000, they strengthened that rule, excuse me, act. And what that did is it sort of made local governments and states to a certain extent responsible for building a mitigation plan, especially if you wanted to seek federal grants. So part of this mitigation plan is if we want to seek federal grants, we have to either do ourselves or co-sign and obviously the county took the lead in it. The first mitigation plan for the county was developed in 2015 and then subsequent ones in 2000 and this is an update to that. So earlier this calendar year, we started the process of updating that plan. So as I said, all of the stakeholders throughout the county got together. So that's all the municipalities, the county, the state, FEMA. And then the county and the state hired a, like a third-party facilitator who actually facilitated all the meetings and wrote that, wrote the plan and that's ESP. We had four meetings throughout the year with all of the stakeholders. So a bunch of morsel staff got together with all of the Wake County, the state and the federal government and we'd started to develop that plan. We had additional meetings, as we'll talk about, with a sort of subcommittee stakeholder type of how we, how we show resiliency and capability to respond to things. And then there was a robust public outreach. So there was two formal meetings and then in addition to the two formal meetings, there was ongoing surveys that were shared online. So we shared that through our communication staff throughout the year. And what's fascinating to me, just as a side note, the two things that we got back from those public input was 50% of all Wake County residents had, had got, got affected by a disaster somehow. And then 75% said they had no idea who to reach out to if they wanted to see how to mitigate things in their personal life with their home or their family. So that was really good input, something we can take forward. And if 75% of the residents in the county have no idea what to do, clearly that's a gap that we need to fill. So part of the process, we learned a lot, other than just developing the plan, it was also how can we serve our residents moving forward? We had a, we had a resident, they call it a citizen rep, so John Frederick, who is also a cert member and on the PSC, he was the official Morrisville citizen rep and he attended all the meetings, had great input, was really engaged, had a lot of questions for me behind the scenes. So I can see where that development really takes citizen resident sort of community input and we don't necessarily have the amount of people who gave input from those surveys. They didn't break it down per municipality, but they had a pretty robust response to those public output. So let's talk about the plan itself. As I said, we started in January. Part of the process is, it's a little bit convoluted a little bit, but once we developed the plan, everybody starts implement, everybody starts adopting it. So the county has adopted it, the state has adopted it, FEMA is working on adopting it. Unfortunately, they have about 1,700 people deployed through various places in the southeast. So they're a little bit behind on getting that, but they're, it's in their hand as well. So I tried to reach out to other municipalities to see where they're at. The process is a little bit different with each municipality. The reason why we're here tonight is because our mitigation plan is part of our comprehensive, our broad comprehensive plan. So I went in front of PZB and then I'm here tonight. So, so each, each municipality has a different approval process. So they're all going through that approval process, whatever it is. Like I said, the plan is active for five years and as a side note, a lot of them, a lot of the town departments actually use this plan in their own plan. So FIRE has a standard to cover, it's a community risk assessment standard to cover. This is a great resource for us to take parts of this and put it in a fire department response model, strategic plan, or I mean a standard to cover that is part of our accreditation document. So this is a wealth of information for us just beyond just the mitigation plan itself. So if I was to break down about a 400-page, one-year development document into 10 steps, that's all you would need. There you are. It's easy as this. So we talked about organizing, we talked about involving them in public, coordinating all the stakeholders. What we'll talk about on the next few slides is actually identifying the hazards, assessing those hazards, because those are two different things. And what we'll talk about is you might have a hazard in your community, but it doesn't necessarily pose a risk. And we'll talk about that. Those are kind of two different things. You'll set goals and we'll, we'll talk about that, but there's four goals that the, that was set in this plan. Obviously you're going to review the possible activities, we'll talk about that as well. Draft the plan and then where we're currently at is adopting the plan. And then obviously there's the implementation and the continuous evaluation to see if the plan is appropriate moving forward. In that 350 or 400-page document, there's each municipality, each municipality has an annex where it's broken out. So you do a pretty broad assessment of the county, you identify a lot of the critical infrastructure and whatnot, and then you start assessing the risk individually in the town. So you might have a hazard and you'll see this on the next slide, like let's say a earthquake. That's a hazard that morsel might face. It's highly unlikely we're going to face it, so we have a low risk associated with that as opposed to severe weather or heat or something that you might see more often that is both a high hazard and a high risk associated with that. So you have to assess sort of how your, how your, how your community has hazards and then what's that risk and then you sort of build the plan going, going forward. And then as you'll see, this is a continuation, it's sort of a living document, two things that were added, which I would probably, if I asked you, you would probably kind of guess, which is a cyber threat. That's obviously becoming more and more important to us. And then the infectious disease, that's clearly something that was added in the last five So this is, this is the risk classification for Morrisville and it's kind of, it's funny because it's all, it's basically countywide. You basically have the same countywide risk. So our two highest ones are extreme heat and severe weather and our two lowest ones are earthquake and landslides. I don't think we're going to be responding to a whole lot of landslides in the fire department. I just don't think it's going to happen. But we do have some dams in town that could pose a risk. So there are some critical infrastructure that you might not think about and I think that's the cool part of this is kind of, it also helps you with your blind spots, which why it's really important for other departments to fit this into our guiding documents as well, because it really does help us out. So those, so once you start to assess your, you get your critical infrastructure, you get the hazards that you might have, you assess what kind of risks those are, you start building, okay, well, how are we going to mitigate that as opposed to historically when we just responded? So as a reminder, that mitigation is really their long-term strategy, sort of the reduce to get ahead of those emergencies or disasters. And they're broken down into, into, into six categories and when we start building the goals on the mitigation side, we bucket these into both the goals that were built and these sort of, these categories. And it really kind of helps us allocate resources, helps us sort of prioritize them and helps elected officials and decision makers in, in sort of helping that prioritization. So these are mitigation strategies that your, your employees developed inside of these development meetings. These are unfunded, they're for the next five years. I wouldn't say it's a wish list, but it's sort of, hey, what do, what does Rick need in IT? What does Michelle need in planning? Jeffrey in public works? Everybody got together and said, what kind of, what can we do to mitigate these risks townwide? So these are unfunded sort of, sort of ideas that, that we had, that we added to the, the document. Again, this also helps with grants. So these, if this is identified in the document, it helps with that grant writing long-term, but for the next five years. These are additional ones and I just want to remind you that, that like, you know, you, as, as elected officials, you haven't prioritized funding for them yet, but, and they're also ongoing. So just because you, some of these don't have an end date. I mean, so cybersecurity is something that you might want to continuously be improving on, just because you implemented something doesn't mean you can't continuously improve on it as technology comes out and you want that ability to write a grant. So you might see something on here. Inside of the big document, you'll see that a lot of municipalities carried over some of their mitigation strategies from previous, the previous document because it was either continuous, it was halfway done, or they just wanted to sort of like continue to prioritize that moving forward. So the next steps, as I said, presented to PZB and they approved the plan on November 7th. I'm here in front of you sort of to open up that kickoff, that public hearing and then we'll, we'll circle back on December 10th and, and sort of revisit this then. Wanted to noted that this is planned. Wanted to noted that this plan expires on December 31st. So it's funny, all the municipalities, I mean, we developed the plan, and then here we are close to December. We collectively would have liked to have been here earlier, but when you get so many stakeholders together, and you're trying to get feedback from FEMA and the state and develop such, I mean, Wake County's a pretty robust, reasonably complicated community. Here we are in December, almost December, but it's not December 31st. So we can ask questions now, or I can go through the annex real fast, and then we could circle back to see if you have any questions.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretem Garamella, please. Okay, go through the annex first.
Okay, so this is Morsel's annex, so this is our, sort of our section. And sort of the things I already talked about is, you have to identify the critical facilities. A lot of times, there's things that might surprise you, either from a facility perspective, or one of the things they did add this year is they added some sort of, like, so they took census data associated with vulnerability, and they made sure that we were identifying vulnerabilities. We were making sure we, everybody in the community was, was head of, say, in this mitigation plan. So there might be sort of blind spots that you continue to have, that you might, this plan might have. It's the, it's called the THIRIS, the Threat and Hazard Risk Assessment, and that kind of allows you to have that broad assessment of the community. So you, you get your critical, you get your critical facilities, these are generally what they are. These are FEMA standards. On a side note, from a fire department perspective, we get a little bit more into the weeds, so we would identify critical facilities a little bit more. We'd have probably more facilities on ours, but this is FEMA standard. So this is our critical facilities. So again, dam failure, there's, there's, they identified some of the dam failures, which you might not know, there's a couple dams in town that might do some damage. Flood. So you're going through all your hazards, and you're, you're identifying what risk is associated with the hazard in your specific community. So again, the flood. I'm going through this reasonably quickly, because I'm sure you've looked at it, and it's, it's a wildfire. So, you know, as Morsel grows, our, what we call, we call it a wooey, so wild and urban interface that is diminishing, but it's still something that you need to, you need to put, you need to have data-driven decisions, and you can't just guess how much that is. So, I mean, respectfully, I know, you know, you know, some of our town staff would like to increase that, you know, tree canopy, but in reality, we have to see what's there. And then, and then the fire intensity scale, which is similar to that. It, it's, it's really just that, that urban, that, it's not necessarily facilities, it's more, more wild man. So then these, these circle back to those, those mitigation strategies that I discussed. And in the plan, it shows what the goals are, there's four of them, and they talk about the things you would think, which is, you know, reducing risks to the population, sort of protecting the infrastructure, the objective, there's, there's goals and objectives, just like there is in any sort of strategic plan. And then you have the action on the left, we had those six of them. And then we really kind of identify generic costs, it's just coming up with an idea of how much it would cost, and then sort of what implementation schedule that would be. And then you would see some of these are actually carried forward, and, and some of them took some coordination with some other municipalities, because some, like, you know, if you see some of the other local jurisdictions near us, they could have some things that we have too, because they intersect, especially when you're dealing with utilities or, or public infrastructure. And then this is the, where Wake County's resolution, where they already signed it. So that's it, Mr. Mayor, if you have any questions.
I'd like to recognize Mayor Pretem Garamella, please, followed by Councilmember Robi.
A chief question is, how many dams do we have in Morsel?
I think we have five dams.
Right.
But we can count them together, I'm sure. We, we have five dams. Some of them are sort of, there's one in Breckridge, I think there's one over off of Sorrel Grove. There's, there's a, there's a few of them in town that might have some, some, some potential damage done to that if they were to let go.
So there are two in Breckendridge?
There's two in Breckendridge, right.
So the, the reason I was asking is, every two years, three years, we pay around $10,000 for engineering disaster recovery plan?
Right.
If something happens. That has been mandated by the General Assembly, and that's to have a plan in place. So do we need a plan in place if you guys are already doing this mitigation? Then will that replace the one that we, you can say was $20,000?
I can find that out. Before you stop writing that check, let me find out. That's a good question, and I, I, I'm not sure, I, I don't know if the two correlate, but I can definitely find out for you, absolutely.
Yeah, because both are doing the same thing, I read.
Correct.
If you guys are already mitigating as a whole, as a town, then I don't need to...
One thing they might not do is they might not assess the quality of the dam. I'm not sure if that's what you're paying for, like, if they actually inspect the dam to see if it's, if it's maintaining itself?
No, that, I think, the stormwater...
Oh, the stormwater does it, yeah.
They do add the inspection, and they do that.
I can ask them, I can, I'll ask engineering, and I'll get, and I'll have that answer for you on December 10th.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Robi, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
Yeah, I wanted to ask a question about the cyber threats mitigation, mitigation strategies. I think it's, I think it was down further. There was something, I saw somewhere where it said that the mitigation strategy was to, to back up all of our data into the cloud.
Yep.
And there was a price tag attached to that, and I just wondered, are we not currently doing that, or is that just what it's costing us?
Well, I think that's one of the, so when I talked to Rick about that, that's something that, that he wanted to move forward, because he wants to continue to make sure we're doing that appropriately as technology improves. So since it's unfunded and it's sort of a wish list, it was the idea that, let's continue, let's have that on there, to make sure that we're, we're continuing to have the appropriate technology to back it up. One of the things he rolled over is that original amount. Let me find it.
I think it was in the annex, actually. It might have been in the annex.
So is it number one?
Yeah. Reduce vulnerability of important data by transitioning IT department's routine data backup to cloud storage. And that was my question, are we currently doing on-prem backups?
I don't think we're doing on-prem backups, but I think he rolled that forward.
It's on the cloud.
Okay, that's what I'm asking.
It's on the cloud.
Because it says to transition.
Yeah, so one of the things that, so that's a good point, it should be continue, right, not just transition. That's some good, that's some, that's some good feedback.
Well, yeah. Yeah, okay. So we're, we're already, I was just concerned because it sounded like we're not.
I think one of the things he identified is that might be some area where he can write a grant, continue to support it. So he wanted to do it in a way where that was on there, so he didn't want to take it off the list, because he, he wants to continue to make that technology available to us, because we're already doing it.
Okay. All right, thank you. Appreciate that.
If you look at some of the other municipalities, that was actually a discussion in one of the meetings, is how do we continue to, how do we identify something that's continuous, where there's no stop date? Like, you want to continue to do something, make sure that that technology is there? And they said, roll it over. Now, one of the unfortunate things is, we can change the language on there, where it's instead of transitioning, continue.
Well, yeah, and also, I mean, under cyber threats, I would also put a, I don't, I didn't see any reference to a disaster recovery plan in the event of a cyber attack, which I, I think would be important, and also...
Like a COOP, a Continuity Operation Plan?
Yes.
Yes. If I could, I don't want to speak on the town manager's behalf, but he has definitely identified that as something that he wants to accomplish.
Okay, but it doesn't go in...
I just spoke for him, I'm sorry.
It doesn't go in here for one...
That would not go in there.
Okay, that's fine.
But what it did is, if I, if I could, Councilwoman?
Yeah.
Is, one of the things that you identify is your capability or your resiliency to respond. So if you go up in one of the, I think it's on, I don't know what page, 275, it shows all the municipalities and your ability, like, it's low, moderate, high. And, and that's something that Morsel, that we found that we needed to do, because we marked it as moderate, which is, next time, when we develop that COOP, it will be high. So it's in the, it's in this plan, it's just not necessarily a mitigation strategy.
I understand. Okay.
It's been identified as a self, we self-assess that as something we needed, and it's in the plan, it's just above.
Okay, understood, thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please, followed by Councilmember Robi.
Yeah, thank you for this presentation. It's, it's very interesting. I did have a question on, let's see, the first page of the annex?
Okay.
Section with the critical facilities?
Yep.
I'm just curious, like, what criteria was used to determine an energy facility or hazardous materials facility?
So those are, so the, great question. Those are FEMA benchmarks, where you have to store a certain amount of chemicals on staff or on site? FIRE actually has as well. We identify those both when we do pre-plans, and our prevention staff does it when we do inspections. Those are all identified in the code enforcement section, because you can have certain amounts or not. So if you meet a certain threshold with having certain chemicals, volume 55 gallons or above, you are marked as having a hazardous waste facility.
But what type of facilities are you finding these in? Are they manufacturing, or...?
Yeah, manufacturing. We have a lot of them in just like clean, sometimes it's clean, you have enough cleaning supplies. Some of them are not just necessarily things you think about where it has that scary symbol and it's detrimental, but they could have a volume of a certain type of chemical, cleaning chemical over 15 gallons, and it's marked as hazardous. So there's all kinds of facilities in town that we have. And honestly, some of the thresholds are high, where you need to have 55-gallon drum to have something hazardous, and it could be five gallons of something else. So it's really just based on a FEMA threshold.
Okay. And how did you do that audit?
So the audit is done with both the fire department and then with Wake County, because they have to do what's called tier-three reporting to the, to the town. So we get these tier-three reports, which is, they self-identify the chemicals they have, and then we take those, they're uploaded into a county system, and then that's all exported. So part of fire code is, they have to give us how much chemicals, and it's called tier, tier-two reporting, excuse me, two-tier reporting. We give that to the county, and then all of that is taken into account and exported back out.
Okay. And then what are the, what constitutes the 11 energy facility types?
I think they're probably substations, like where there's a certain-sized substation across town.
Is that the only thing?
Yeah, I would think that would be the only thing. One of the thing that would be nice on here is you actually, you put maybe, like a map, so you could, you could get specifically where they're at.
Right, it would be good to know, like, what's the definition of some of these?
I can, I can get those definitions, and I can, I can have those for you on December 10th as well.
Okay, yeah, that'd be good. Just looking at some of these others. So, forgive me, this is the last question. So what is the, what constitutes a food hydration shelter? How do you determine that? We have five of them.
Those, those, in my opinion, are, from the last slide, they're like elementary schools, like places where you're handing out food, stuff like that.
Okay, so like, what, sorry.
Yeah, so they're places where they would have food or water on site that you hand, that you, that you give to residents or, or the public.
Okay, all right, thank you, that's it.
Councilmember Robi, please.
Just to follow up on, on Councilmember Robi's point about cybersecurity, as we're looking, I was about to ask the question about continuity plan. What kind of municipality was hit by a cyber attack? And just a lot of issues with, like, public expectations and different kinds of services that aren't being offered, and billing rates being off. So, you know, I was curious as to, when we talk about housing mitigation, Wake County, you know, as they set these standards, looking at what, laying out the standards of what a recovery plan would be like. And I think part of that could be also a communications strategy with the public, so working in tandem with communications in the event we were hit with a cyber attack. So I just wanted to throw that out there as a thought, and kind of look at these things, because they evolve and change so frequently, and it's hard to kind of keep up with, you know, how dangerous these attacks could be, how quickly they could happen.
If I'm, if I'm not mistaken, I think all 13 towns have emergency operation plan. And if I, I'm recalling this correctly, only seven towns, at the, at the time of development, have a continuity of operation plan. So it's definitely been something self-identified. And if I could speak for, for Tom Andrew Brandon, he has, he has definitely said that it has to happen sooner rather than later. So we have identified it. And then Councilmember Robi, FEMA makes a great system for developing a COOP, so you really can follow their lead. We will, I mean, you know, that's where really a lot of that, that information comes from, about cyber, communication with the public, making sure you're using Everbridge or other sort of avenues to communicate appropriately, so.
Thank you. I had a couple of thoughts for slide eight, where it has all the list of the different prob, possible risks.
Yep.
So is that top to bottom decreasing risks? So terrorism is the lowest of the moderate risks, or is that just kind of random?
Those are just random in there.
Random.
But they're, but they're, so if you were to go into the actual document, they list them, and most of them actually fall to the high, to above 2.5. FEMA, FEMA puts those in, in blocks like that, but a lot of them, if you were to do a moderate risk, like a sub-moderate risk, a lot of them would probably fall to the high of the moderate risk, if that makes sense. So, you know, it's 2.0 to 2.9, a lot of them are 2.5 or above. So they're approaching a high risk, if that makes sense. But they're not ranked specifically in there, from hurricane tropical storm wouldn't be 2.9, and terrorism would be 2.0. They're just in there.
Okay, so I was just wondering, does it become really subjective? So it's really just better to bucket them like this?
Yeah, well, so the unfortunate thing is, that's how the state and FEMA wanted it done inside the plan. So sometimes you default, since it's an overall plan, where you'd go with what all the other municipalities did. But to your point, it would be ideal if we identified them, top to bottom, moderate risk, A through whatever.
And it might be helpful for residents if we knew, like, how often they did happen? Like, when's the last time we had extreme heat?
Right.
These three years?
Yeah.
The last 20, or something like that. So that's maybe something in the future to think about.
Yeah.
And that makes this more meaningful.
Well, what, what we could potentially do, if I might, is we're getting ready, FIRE's getting ready to redo our community risk assessment, which we take a lot of this information and put in there. So we might not have it in that hazard mitigation plan, but we can definitely identify it in town document, guiding documents. So we could, we could show the public specifically on a micro level what Morsel has. So we could definitely, if it's not in here, use that feedback for our own guiding documents.
Wonderful. And then I had another thought on slide 11. So Wake County and the state already have an emergency platform for information sharing. So would this be kind of reduplicating that, or would we just encourage people to subscribe to that?
Yeah, we would, we would, for which one are you talking about?
Number six.
Number six.
For information sharing in an emergency, like, there's...
Right.
...C. Warren already, and things like that.
They do, we would just co-sign to them, but it's also us just engaging that platform, Everbridge or whatever, Ready Wake, making sure we're, we're co-signing them. I know that, I know the county is talking about maybe going to a different platform, but we've also engaged Cary Communications to see if there's some way that we can communicate with Cary Communications also to our public, to our residents, not just necessarily county, but it can come from the 911 center. So it's also just not the county, it's any other information sharing that Communications will and us can use. So, yeah.
And also Morsel Central.
Yeah, there's Morsel Central, that's right.
Tag that and brand that as an emergency way to push to people.
Yeah.
Encourage more people to sign up for it.
Yeah, and I think that, yeah, as our, as our community becomes more complicated, communication obviously is, is ideal, and it's a continuous improvement with trying to communicate and looking for anything we can.
Excellent. Looking down the road, see if anyone else has anything want to share. I think on behalf of all of us, thank you so much for bringing this forward, and it's a lot of really good work.
Yeah, well, I'm just the face for it. There's a lot of town staff that did a significant amount of work, engineering, stormwater, Jeffrey with Public Works, everybody, you know, Michelle, they did a lot, a lot of work with this. with Public Works, everybody, you know, Michelle, they did a lot, a lot of work with this. So I'm very thankful for them, for the work they did. I'm just the one who had it, drew the straw short strong, had to come up here and talk.
Okay. Well, thank you for being up here tonight. At this point, I'll declare the public hearing open. Are there any speakers signed up in town court?
No one signed up to speak.
No one signed up to speak. According to my notes, we're going to announce that the public hearing will remain open through the December 10th meeting and will entertain any comments from council at this time, if anyone has any. Okay. So we look forward to kind of publicizing the fact that this went out and encourage people to come on the 10th if they have any thoughts.
That'd be great.
And then we are scheduled to adopt this on the 10th as well.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
At this time, we are scheduled for a 10-minute break. We are exactly on schedule. Thank you to our staff for nailing it. Nice job. It is 7:30. We're going to reconvene at 7:41, please. Thank you very much. We're coming back into session at this time. We're at item 12, new items. We invite Jeffrey Brown, Public Works Director, forward to facilitate the first item.
Mayor, I think Elliot Ward with the Planning Department is actually going to start and then Jeffrey will come in on the second item. Thank you.
As he said. Mr. Ward, the floor is yours.
Thank you. Good evening, council. Okay, so I'm going to start, oh, I apologize. This item is related to amendments to the town code of ordinances. The first is an amendment to section 18-82. This section relates to unlawful conditions that are deemed to be public nuisances. Specifically, this deals with tall grass, vegetation overgrowth and refuse. The language proposed to be added, it deals, it relates to maintenance responsibilities for both private property owners as well as homeowners associations, subdivisions in general. This is along property frontages. This language derives directly from a resolution that was approved in 2006. It's resolution 2006-032. It was adopted March 27th of 2006. This has been, this language has been the general policy followed by Public Works ever since, so almost for the last 20 years. It just hasn't been codified in the code of ordinances. Basically, it just deals with the property owner's responsibility to maintain their grass, overgrowth, anything up to the pavement of the road, so back of, of the curb, basically. If you have, if that, the right of way meets your property line or if there's a sidewalk along the front of your property, if there's a grass strip in between the sidewalk and the pavement, it would also be your responsibility to maintain that as well. Again, this has been enforced for the last almost 20 years, but we are now just adding it to the code of ordinances. That would be section A for the private property owners. And then section, letter B would be related directly to subdivisions, anything within subdivisions, such as traffic islands, median islands, things like that, and the responsibilities of HOAs or the private owners within subdivisions to maintain that grass as well. And then just a little additional background on, like I, like I mentioned, this is from, derived directly from resolution 2006-032. This was adopted by town council on March 27th, 2006. Public Works has been enforcing this, following this general policy ever since. This language also aligns, my staff member, our code enforcement officer, Jordan Prince, he did additional research on neighboring municipalities, some of those I've listed here, Cary, Raleigh, Durham and Apex, but there were others. All have similar language in their code ordinances as well. And as I mentioned, not new enforcement, but I know it's important, we get message out to residents, so we will work with communications, just off the top of my head, working through our social media sites, just getting the message out there that this is, has been a policy so far, but just to remind that this is the general rule for the town as well. And that's all I have. I think Jeffrey's going to go ahead and present his and then we'll do questions at the end of both of them.
Good evening, mayor, members of council. Jeffrey Brown, Public Works Director. Tonight, we have before you chapter 58 modifications to the ordinance. 5841 basically has to deal with school zones. And so we're just basically updating the language in the ordinance and we're adding Sterling Monetary School to that. And 5842, that has to do with no, no parking. And so basically we are adding streets. So both of those sections, the speed limit and no parking in the ordinance did not have, was not a comprehensive list of all our streets. So we worked with our police department, Public Works staff did, to do a survey of where we had no parking signs as well as speed limit signs and we've got that rectified to match what we have there in the streets now. So that's what we have before you tonight. And so we can, basically they were listed, but we provided a chart for each one to make it clear for both the speed limit as well as the no parking. And so we'll bring both of these items before you. And so we'll bring both of these items before you at the December 10th meeting for your approval. And so at this point in time, Elliot and I are here and available to answer any questions you may have on either one of the ordinances.
Mayor Protam Garamello, please.
Elliot, going back to the first and the second point. So...
The first slide?
Yes. Yeah, this one. So you're talking about the devil's strip, you know, which is also public right-of-way. My question is, there are a lot of utility companies which are coming, they have the right to dig, and they're digging, and they're going, and they're just putting some seed and straw and leaving. My devil's strip is nothing but weeds. Okay, so how much am I trying to maintain it? It doesn't because someone comes there and basically destroys it and doesn't do a, I mean, they're doing a good job in what they're doing. They're filling it up and putting this grass and seeds, but eventually, the only thing that grows there is weeds. And that's a constant issue that we have been seeing in Brackenridge and other areas too. So if you are telling the responsibility of moving, they do it, but it is hard when they have no control on who is coming and using that public right-of-way. So why are we enforcing so much? Because the same with HOA too, you know, like we spend, you know, thousands and thousands of dollars on irrigation because someone will come, Google will come, AT&amp;T will come, and then you have some, now the electric lines they're putting, they'll come and do it. So we have no control. So when we don't have any control on the right-of-way of who is putting what, yeah, we are doing it because we want to make it look good. Technically, it is the town's property because the right-of-way is yours. So it's like an unfunded mandate and then putting an ordinance on top of it, saying that you got to maintain it. And how fair is it to justify that?
Yeah, no, that's a great question. I deal with that in my own house, right? We have people that come and do work without, you know, without our say-so all the time. So I think beyond that, what's out of your control, I think, as it relates to the public nuisance section of the Code of Ordinances, what my staff member, like I said, what Jordan Prince, our code enforcement officer, would be out there enforcing, tall grass, overgrowth, anything like that. If it came to, down to a private property owner, whether it's a single-family home, whether it's a vacant lot that someone owns, whatever that might be, ultimately, when it comes down to enforcement, getting it rectified, it would fall on the responsibility of that property owner to mow, mow down the weeds, mow the grass, whatever it is.
Yes, I totally get that. So then why don't we specify, like, grass on, like, one feet and above? Because you have HOA who's going and writing citations, and now, now this is the other one which is coming behind. So instead of both doing the same job, you know, if it is a certain height of the grass, 100%, because that's public safety, it can be snakes in there, anything can be there. I'm all okay, but specify the verbiage in that, you know, what does maintain mean, you know?
Yeah, that's a good point. So you're saying maybe amend this previously approved language and just, for more specificity, is that what you're saying?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, to say, like, for example, landscape maintenance and ground maintenance along the property line, that's a blanket statement, just putting it, I'm fine. But shall, like, you know, the individual property owner shall also mow, otherwise maintain the grass strip? What is the standard that is beyond that, you know, is, that is, that can be categorized as a nuisance?
Right.
Or a citation can be given? So towns can have that kind of a standard, and there is always HOAs who obviously will come every 15 days, go around and do that.
Yeah, and thanks, Jeffrey. He, on, in the same section, Section 18-82, the number one states uncontrolled growth of noxious weeds or grass to a height of excess of 10 inches for improved property, or in excess of 18 inches for unimproved property, causing or threatening it to cause hazard detrimental to public health or safety. So...
If you can incorporate that language in here.
So, I mean, it is, it's in Section 18-82, so maybe we could reference...
Yeah, something like that.
The previous section, okay.
If I may recognize the Town Manager, please.
If Elliot doesn't mind, I think a couple of things to keep in mind, Mayor Protam, and certainly all of Council. You know, one, this is, this is a consistent approach in my experience across municipalities. I think there are, there are some inherent challenges with being overly specific on what that is. I think the more important concept or thought I would share with you is that this is just to give Jordan, whoever might be in that role, the teeth when needed. This is not to go out and start enforcing this. Again, this has been enforced since 2006. So this is more of the, you know, Jordan, and I talk semi-regularly with Jordan because I bring a few things to his attention, and he's, he's very commonsensical. He approaches it with understanding the goal is compliance, not enforcement. You hear that with our police officers all the time. The same thing for Jordan. The goal is never enforcement. The goal was always compliance. And I think he takes a very level-headed approach to that. This just does provide him, in those cases, when you don't get cooperation, it gives him the teeth he might need to be able to better do his job. And again, it is contextual for the larger overall section as well. Thank you.
Anything else, Mayor Protam?
No, I think if you can mention this for additional, like, section, if you can link both together, that would be good.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Fender, please.
I guess the first thing is, that code that you quoted, 18-82, is that what it was? Does that apply to within subdivisions as well?
Yeah, so it applies across town if, if the homeowners' association of whatever subdivision has more stringent requirements, then obviously, that would be enforced on their end. That's just the minimum standards that we require for the town itself.
What if the HOA has less stringent requirements? Would the town come in and do anything?
Well, yeah, I mean, it, it's, it's their responsibility to maintain within the subdivision, so, but...
What if they're not? What if they're not enforcing?
Then that's when Jordan would, would need to step in, discuss with the HOA, figure out a plan of action to get whatever's not being maintained, maintained, to our, to our standards.
So the town would have some jurisdiction within the subdivision?
Yes.
Okay.
What, this language basically, Letter B really, what Letter B is basically stating is that when it comes down to it, if there is, like Brandon just mentioned, if there's an argument against, well, that's not our responsibility to maintain, Public Works, whoever it is, can point to this and say, well, actually, you know, it is your responsibility based on, you know, this code of language.
Yeah, because I think, and our Town Manager knows where I'm going with this. We have a number of homes within our neighborhood that I know have, for at least nine years, have had not one blade of grass in their lot. And supposedly, our HOA, you know, gives citations, but, I mean, for nine years, the lot has not improved at all. And if they were truly enforcing, they, those houses would have gone into foreclosure by now. But they're not doing anything. So I just wonder what the town can do. But you're, that code, it has to be over 10 inches? Is that what the code was?
Yeah, so if it's, that's for an improved property, it's 10 inches. If it's like a vacant lot, whatever, it's 18 inches.
Okay, so this, these all would be improved property?
Yeah. So you're saying they are, they're all overgrown, and they have been for a long time?
They get overgrown, but they're not always, they mow their weeds. But is that acceptable?
Absolutely. I mean, if, if a complaint is submitted, whether within a subdivision or not, Jordan can absolutely go out there, investigate, start applying any kind of enforcement, you know, ability that we have. I mean, to be honest with you, the tall grass is a constant paddle for him. He, you know, that's one of the things that he's continuously going out, trying to get it rectified, you know. And then we do have, you know, situations, there's stuff written in the state statute about repeat offenders, so if it continues to happen, then we can also take additional measures. But, but to answer your original question, yes, we could enforce within the subdivision if the complaint comes in.
All right. That's all I had. Thank you.
I just have a little observation that as we become even more sustainable, there might be some people who want to create natural yards and things like that. So I'd imagine it would be, I'm not sure how much leeway we'd be given whenever a complaint happens, then he'd have to enforce our regulations. But I'd just like to be open into the future that there might be other ways to develop a yard that might not meet these inches, but meet the idea of having a presentable yard.
Yeah, that's a good point. I know it's been a more, more recent trend, more natural yards, not mowing, not using gas mowers, things like that. So I think if that's something that Council wants to pursue, maybe we could consider amendments to the language. As it sits right now, if someone complains to Jordan, basically, he just goes out there, investigates, does it or does it not meet the standard that we have in our code, and that's all he has to go on. So, yeah, I mean, if that's something you want to consider in the future, for sure.
Not at this time. It's just pointing out it might be something in the future, and just want to be aware of it. I think the area between the devil's strip, though, I think needs to be maintained, just for more safety reasons, but anything inside may be less so. Councilmember Abadi, please.
Thank you. I just wanted to mention that the, the standards are based on health codes. So a person can want to have a natural yard and use whatever influence that they want to keep that yard. But once you're talking about grass that's 18 inches tall, that presents certain health hazards that have to be mitigated at some level, you know. So I think we would want to probably get some, you know, we probably want to look into what constitutes a national, a natural yard. When this becomes a problem, just, you know, put some language around what actually constitutes that and which standards are health and safety-related that we can't compromise on.
Okay, thank you. Circling back for a second, if anyone wants. Councilmember Fender, oh, I think we're all done. If there's no other questions, we're looking to take action on this on the 10th. Thank you very much for bringing this forward. Appreciate the presentation.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Who would like to recognize Aaron Hudson at this time to facilitate our final new agenda item, the resolution amending appointed public bodies, bodies administration? Bless you.
Bless you. Good evening, Mayor, members of the Council. Thank you for giving me a few minutes of your time this evening. As you can see, I am not Deputy Town Clerk McCain, but I am going to present on her behalf this evening. She, myself, and Town Manager Zudema have all collaborated on this item, so we feel confident that we'll be able to share this information and address any questions that you might have moving forward. So tonight's presentation will incorporate feedback and address any questions that were raised by Council at your November 14th work session. It'll allow us to review some staff recommended changes and any other minor changes that we have indicated throughout the policy. We'd like to hear from you all, any additional questions or comments that you might have. And then we'll wrap up, just making sure we're gaining consensus from you on the recommended changes that we've presented, or incorporating any additional edits that you might all have through consensus. If you'll allow me to work through the few slides that we have, and just make note of any questions you have, then we'll circle back to those towards the end. So at your November 14th work session, there was some discussion as to whether or not quorum was statutorily required for elected bodies such as Town Council. That answer is yes. However, for advisory committees, quorum rules are established by Council's approved policies and guidelines, which you all have in your appointed public bodies administrative policy. This information was confirmed with Attorney Gray and through contacts at the UNC School of Government. So that information is as good as we have it in place right now. Integrating Council's feedback into our policy update, some of the key points is that the Clerk's Office will inform Council when meetings are canceled due to advance notice or lack of quorum at the meeting date. We're also going to provide our staff liaisons with updated attendance guidance, and that's going to be covered in a future slide, and provide that attendance information to Council for consideration in your appointment decisions. We've also removed reference to the senior advisory committee members being grandfathered if they may reside outside of town jurisdiction as that particular circumstance no longer applies. So this is our last slide covering your prior discussion. This just reiterates staff's recommendation to maintain virtual meeting options for a state of emergency only, which is currently outlined in the appointed public bodies policy. And that's really due to facility and equipment limitations and reduced engagement that we've seen with our virtual advisory committee participants in the past. So moving on, I just want to cover the broader portion of our recommended policy changes. We have a few minor updates to definitions to share with you. We've added a formal definition of vice chair, previously only chair was defined. We've clarified that annually, Council will affirm the final recommendation of chair and vice chair for committees. The policy currently indicates that Council will make that final selection, so we just wanted to clarify that you will indeed affirm that selection. We've also clarified that a department head is the leadership team member, to really be consistent with our current practice and terminology. Leadership team members could be a department head or other senior manager within a department, or another member of the senior leadership team. Moving on to the meat of our recommended policy changes, I'm going to begin with committee membership and authority. We've removed reference to sunset committees such as PMAC or MPAC. We've added some clarifying language that appointed members have no term limits. It is already noted in the policy that leadership roles such as chair and vice chair do currently have term limits. We've also previously noted the removal of the senior advisory committee grandfathering language. We've also established a requirement for subcommittees to obtain prior approval from the Town Manager or their designee before moving forward. This will really help ensure that a subcommittee has work proposed that is consistent with the scope of the committee and their charter. We've also clarified initial appointment terms for newly established committees set half of those members at three-year terms with two-year terms to follow, and the remaining half of members at two-year terms. We simply just removed some redundant language that was there that said that Council could adjust terms to establish staggered terms because it was already laid out and clearly stated. We've also added language to meeting conduct that the chair and vice chair have the authority and the responsibility to redirect meeting discussion that is not aligned with the adopted agenda, and that will be reinforced with our upcoming staff liaison training, as well as our advisory committee training that's going to be taking place after the first year. So in this slide, you'll see that staff has recommended combining and reordering some of the policy items to really better align. Council will also see some of the additional information here aligned back to your discussion related to quorum. So I'm going to talk a little bit about meetings and attendance. We've added language that all meeting minutes will reflect all members, both present and absent. If a meeting is not held due to quorum, the minutes will indicate as such, and all member attendance will be reflected. That means that if there's no quorum at the time of the meeting, any member who is absent will have that absence counted towards the attendance part. will have that absence counted towards the attendance policy, and I believe this captures the intent of the discussion that council and staff had at your November 14th work session. We've also added a new item, that if a meeting is canceled in advance, one day prior to the meeting, that will not count against any member as an absence aligned with the attendance policy. So here before you, you will see that we did have a little bit of brief discussion in regards to what was a scheduled meeting versus a held meeting. Deputy Town Clerk McCain worked with the staff liaisons to obtain some additional detail and assess quorum compliance, and start some of that discussion around any areas for improvement. So a scheduled meeting really just means that it's been formally included and approved in an annual meeting calendar, or through a special called meeting notice. A held meeting means that that meeting took place, and quorum was counted and official business was conducted. For our terms, that meeting will count towards attendance, and there will be minutes that capture that meeting detail. A canceled meeting means that a meeting may have been scheduled, but was canceled at least one day prior to that scheduled meeting. In terms of this policy, a canceled meeting will not count towards attendance, and there will not be minutes, because there will have been no meeting. If there is no quorum, for the purposes of this policy, a meeting was scheduled, but there was no quorum present at the time of the meeting, and the meeting could not be held, the meeting was not canceled, but the meeting could not be held. So that means it will count towards attendance, both those individuals, present and absent, will be noted, and the minutes will state, due to lack of quorum, no business could be conducted. So we will have that information, and you will have that information. Continuing with meetings and attendance, please note that several of these items have been renumbered or moved to a retitled section to best align, so there, there may be some, some renumbering here. The policy currently states that any committee experiencing three meetings without a quorum will trigger a staff review. So we have added some clarifying language, really to indicate that the first meeting following any new appointments will not be counted in that three-meeting rule, really because all new appointees are given a, a short grace period to begin attending, so we just want to allow some fairness with that. We've added some clarification of items that could be included or reflected within a year-end committee report, as well as clarified that a joint meeting with council could take place during a regular meeting that is already scheduled for that committee, or during a special meeting that they have scheduled. Item E begins our transition into another section that has been retitled agendas and minutes. Since committees are an extension of town council, staff has included language to bring some of their practices back into alignment. What we have proposed is that agendas for committees will be posted to the town website the Friday prior to the meeting occurring the following week, and that all supplemental meeting materials would be attached to each relevant agenda item, very similar to what you all see in your, your meeting agenda practices. Similarly with item F, we have added clarifying language that committee minutes prepared by the staff liaison will be reviewed by their leadership team member before going forward to the committee for approval. Continuing with agendas and minutes, again, several of these elements have been renumbered or moved to a retitled section. Many of the items on this slide actually did not change, but related to attendance, staff discussed and reflected on our discussion with council, and we have provided the recommendations shown as a streamlined approach, to really try to simplify and make it as easy as possible for our members and our staff liaisons. So our next section was retitled to better reflect both recruitment and appointment practices. While advertising and recruiting may, may occur in one season, we do know and want to clarify that appointments may typically occur in the following season, so there may be a spring, summer, fall, winter. If a committee experiences two or more vacancies, be that through dismissals or resignations outside of those two major appointment cycles, we have added language that staff will ask council to appoint from existing candidates that we have on file. We've also added new language to recommend that the appointment to fill any vacancies for the remainder of the unexpired term. So this is a little bit new, but that would also be aligned with the UDO and the PZB appointment policy. Staff does believe that that will help us in staggering terms, and allow for consistency of terms on committees, where we have run into some, some committees who have had a number of people cycle off at one time, which we're trying to get away from, so that there is a little more structure and consistency in member serving. We've also added some new language to include that new or special recruitment could be considered if a sufficient applicant pool is unavailable. That is always within town council's discretion as well. Staying in the recruitment and appointment section, we've added language, really just to reiterate, that council can set initial appointment terms for newly formed members at two or three years, that section just didn't allude back to where it was also previously stated in the policy. We have added new language that staff liaisons will provide written notice of upcoming term expiration at 60 and 30-day intervals, along with the notice that they receive from the Clerk's Office. So we really just want to reinforce and provide as many opportunities to our current serving members to get that information as far in advance as they possibly can, they get that information from the Clerk's Office. We want to be able to share some of that responsibility with the staff liaisons and reengage them in that process. We've also added language to clarify that during a state of emergency, if our committees are meeting virtually, the participants must be on camera. Okay, so I know I went through that a little bit quickly, but I wanted to make sure I got the meat of the discussion out there, and happy to go back to any slide where you all may have questions, or if there are any topics we have not covered, that you all want to be sure that we address this evening.
Thank you, councilmember Robati, please.
How will you ensure that the, any changes to the attendance policy are communicated in the same way across all of the advisory committees?
Thank you, that's a great question. So what Bianca has planned is a training for all of our staff liaisons that's going to be held on December 16th, so that information is going to be filtered from her to those folks. That training is also going to include their leadership team members, so their department heads will be included. She is also scheduling a follow-up training, or not a follow-up training, but a training with all of our advisory committee members, so that information will be shared with them as well. It is stated in the policy that anytime there is a change, that information is to be communicated to all current members. So we've, we've got a little bit of a lift to get this information out, but it will be going out following the December 10th approval, if council approves it December 10th.
Okay, the only other thing, and I guess it's probably not part of this, but when we, last year when we went around to the different meetings, and it seemed to me that there was some unevenness in the ability of the staff liaisons to control the meeting, and that's not, you know, that's not a knock on them, some people are natural facilitators and some aren't, but I do think that it would be good to either choose people that already have that skillset, or to train people, you know, to do some type of training around that, just because meeting facilitation is a skill, and it has to be learned and, and practiced, so I just wanted to mention that, 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 you know, that was an observation that I had about the liaison situation. I'm glad there's going to be training, I think that's a good first step.
I do not see any other questions, thank you very much for the presentation, we look forward to addressing this on the 10th.
Thank you very much.
At this time, we're moving on to council comments, I would like to first recognize councilmember Scottish Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretem Garamella.
Thank you, Mayor, I don't have any comments this evening.
Council, Mayor Pretem Garamella, followed by councilmember Johnson, please. Okay. Well played. Councilmember Johnson, followed by myself.
Okay, so I'll continue the trend, I really don't have any comments, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Okay, it'll be me, then councilmember Robati. Hi, happy Thanksgiving, everyone, I'd like to, big shout out and thanks to staff for all the hard work to get the renovation of the Morrisville Community Park renovation done, the, we had a bunch of children there, students from Morrisville Elementary School there for the ribbon cutting this week, and it was really nice, and a number of us, councilmembers were there well, as well, so I know that was a heavy lift, took a while, but it's a really great playground, and hopefully it'll last another few decades for us. Councilmember Robati, followed by councilmember Fender.
No comments this evening, happy Thanksgiving, everyone.
Councilmember Fender, followed by councilmember Ralph.
I'll continue the trend, happy Thanksgiving, enjoy spending time with your family and friends, and be safe out there.
Okay, councilmember Ralph, please.
Well, I just, I do, I just have three really brief comments. First of all, I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving, and this is my last meeting of the year, so I just want to thank my colleagues in the council and the staff for a great, great job this year. The four pillars on that wall, dedication, integrity, courtesy, and innovation, I think it just defines us every day of what we're doing, so I just want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving. You get an early Christmas gift from me, I won't be there for the December meeting. Very productive joint meeting with Smart City Advisory Committee, so I want to thank manager Zudema and Rick Ralph for moderating that, and we'll be providing notes to the council. And then finally, I was honored to be the commencement speaker at WIC Tech's Phi Theta Kappa Honor Society last week, so that was just really an honor for me to be there, so, but have a great rest of the year, and look forward to seeing you guys after the holidays.
Thank you. Town manager Zudema, do you have any comments from staff?
Briefly, I just want to take an opportunity to thank first and foremost our staff, and some of you have done that, and I'm very appreciative of that, they're very appreciative of that, but, you know, hopefully they will be able to take a couple days this week to rest and relax and recover, you know, not all of our folks can do that, some of our public safety folks will still be here doing their jobs, which we're very appreciative of, but I'm, I'm particularly, particularly thankful this year for our senior leadership team, who is always here and always doing what it takes to get things done, certainly to our department heads, and our, who are members of our leadership team, and again, I want to just call out quickly Erin for having stepped up in general with our Clerk's Office, and again, tonight, not realizing she would make that presentation, but I thought it went very well. So thank you to all of our staff, thank you for your continued support, and hope everyone has a good holiday, thank you.
At this time, we are scheduled to take a five-minute break, just to relocate down to the table, so why don't we be down there at 8:30, please, please bring your microphones and your blue cards, thank you. Our final item on this evening's agenda is a work session, and we invite Jeffrey Brown, Public Works Director, to the table, oh, here you are, to lead the discussion.
Let me just start off, thank you, Mayor, and, and council for this time tonight, John Lattney, Assistant Town Manager. We are here to talk about the review of the solid waste services RFP submittals, and then the user fee consideration, just built upon a presentation that was made several months ago now, and looking forward to filling you in on what's happened since then, and with that will be Jeffrey Brown, our Director of Public Works.
Thank you, Mr. Lattney, good evening again, council, it's a pleasure to be here. So tonight, we're going, you know, basically, you know, just kind of highlight, again, remind you of what our current services are, we'll go over the results of our RFP that we issued, results we're due last week, got those in, had three different vendors, kind of give you an overview of that. We'll go over our survey and audit results, we issued a community survey, as you recall, you had an opportunity to look at that and provide feedback, and then we issued that out to the community, and in part of the process is we actually did an internal audit as far as actually going out into community and seeing how as far as actually going out into community and seeing how people were doing with their recycling, to kind of provide that stats against what we were going to find from the community survey. We'll give you our recommendations from public works as far as what we foresee would be best to continue with moving forward with solid waste services, and then what those cost projections look like for FY '26. And then we'll go over a timeline and then open it up for questions and discussions. So, this slide here is just to kind of give you an overview of our GFL contract cost currently. So, it outlines it. I'm not going to read it. This was previously provided in the last presentation, but this is kind of, I guess, it shows you what we're currently paying. So, we had three bids come in on our solid waste services RFP that was issued. We had bids come in from GFL, Wall Recycling, Meridian Waste. This gives you an overview of what those costs are. GFL obviously is our current provider, and so you see that current cost. So their cost submitted for moving forward was just under $10,000 less than what they're currently providing that service for monthly. And so, Meridian Waste was our second lowest bid, pretty close to GFL, and then Wall Recycling was kind of an outlier, kind of quite a bit more. Meridian Waste, yeah, they are just getting into residential solid waste collections in North Carolina. They provide that service in our neighboring states, but I think Southern Pines is their first local contract in North Carolina. So, as part of our RFP, we also asked for alternate bids based on some alternate service deliveries we could be looking at. And so, we asked for, this is basically a summary of that. So, we asked for recycling collection to be, you know, if they provided that every other week instead of every week, what would that look like? So, that cost for GFL, right now, the cost they provided for weekly recycling was $5.92, and if they provided that every other week, it was $3.99. We asked for on-demand white goods collection, so basically that would be if you had a white good at your household and you wanted to call in and have that picked up, that's what that would be. And so, the price they provided was $205.16 per appliance, which is significantly high. Corley White Goods Collection, they offered no bid. They didn't provide a bid. On-demand book item collection, you know, again, per load, and that was $205.16 per load. On-demand extra yard waste collection, they provided no bid for. We also asked for containerized yard waste collection, and what that would cost. And, you know, so if we went with that, then we would not do what we do now as far as the bundles and as far as having to bag it. So, if they did a container, just like a just same-sized cart that you have for recycling and solid waste, it would be $4 per household. And then loose leaf collection, they offered no bid for. And Wall Recycling offered no alternate bids, and then Meridian Waste offered in the following, as far as the summary you see there. So, the next slide is, we kind of get into our survey, kind of overview of what that looked like. So, the first slide there talks about, you know, optional curbside services to the contract. So, we offered for loose leaf curbside collection. Residents were interested in that. Obviously, 55% of them said no, 45% said yes. And asked, would they be interested in carts for yard waste collection? And 68% said no, 32% yes. And, you know, these survey results were based on 188 responses that we received. Next slide is as far as on-demand cardboard collection and on-demand extra yard waste collection. 60% said no on the extra cardboard, and then 70% no on the extra yard waste collection. On-demand white goods collection, 60% was no, and on-demand book item collection, that was a 56% yes and a 44% no. Recycling cart frequency, you know, we asked, you know, should recycling carts be serviced weekly or every other week? And we wanted to know from residents, you know, how full were your carts? So, we asked residents how full were their cart each week. And this is a survey result. Basically, 68% of residents answered that their cart was either three-quarters full or full at the end of each week. So, that led us to believe, based on the survey results that we received, that every other week recycling was not going to be feasible for the community, as far as the ones that responded. So, this is, we went out, and like I said, we surveyed 490 recycling carts in various neighborhoods across towns on the various dates in which the carts were out. And what we found was basically 42% of the carts already were three-quarters full to completely full. 63% of the carts had broken down the cardboard boxes, and others had not. And then 23% of the carts had some level of contamination, plastic bags, stoffel, trash, et cetera. So, based on what we gathered and from the community survey, you know, it's our recommendation that we stay with weekly recycling. I included this slide. This was actually in the memo that was questions that were generated by Council when we presented back in September, and we provided some clarification and some additional information. So, I just want to provide you this slide to kind of give you an idea that, obviously, this is the town's cost that we currently take on each quarter when we provide white good collections. This is provided by public works staff. They'll have to go onto our website, and they register for the item to be picked up, and then we go out and pick it up on that, you know, once a quarter. So, as you can see from the cost provided, that our cost in doing so is much more feasible than the $210 per appliance that was provided by GFL. So, as far as solid waste contract recommendations, you know, is our recommendation that we continue partnering with GFL for our solid waste service provider, and that we continue weekly garbage collection, that we continue with yard waste collection being bagged and bundled as it is now. White goods collections, we recommend that we continue to do that internally with our staff. We provide a much more cost-effective service to the community, and, you know, while it takes us away from our normal duties, but no more than it does, we feel like that's a service that we can continue to provide without a significant impact to our resources. Book item collections, you know, we recommended that continue it twice per year. And then yard waste collections, you know, residents apply their own containers, or they bag. But in essence, our recommendation is to continue the service we're currently providing with no change. So, this is basically what we project for FY '26 contract cost projection. As you can see, those costs have come down. So, we anticipate that overall yearly cost would be $1,473,600. And we've assumed that this is, you know, we'll add 25 homes throughout the year for growth. And highlighted our FY '25 cost there, so you have that as a comparison. This next slide is our solid waste user fee consideration. You know, there's been some discussion in the past about what that would look like, and so we'll work with our Byron and budget to determine what that would need to be. And the reason that, you know, we're bringing that for discussion for you tonight and showing that to you, because the timeline is critical for us, because, you know, we'll need town council to make a decision in December, by the December meeting, so we can have ample time to get that to Wake County if there is a notion to move forward with enacting the solid waste user fee for FY '26. So, you know, really the only one you should, you know, need to focus on is the GFL one. The wall and meridian was just terrible, because I provided a slide to Byron, and he provided me what those numbers would be if we had considered those other vendors. So, that solid waste monthly fee would be, if you just based on the current cost, it would be $17.75 per month. But if you added in some inflationary costs over a five-year period, so you wouldn't have to, because the way the contract would be set up, you know, is based on a CPI increase, whatever that CPI increase is. So, if you just do a solid waste user fee based on what the current initial price would be for FY '26, then if you were to do a full-cost recovery, you would have to modify that solid waste user fee every year. And so, certainly, you know, I think it would be much more manageable to determine what that price would be and leave it as is once this enacted. And that's what the 1885 number is. It assumes it captures that. So, what are we looking for from tonight from council is, obviously, you know, like to hear feedback from town council as to what your interest level is in establishing a solid waste user fee. And if there's interest, is that going to be a full-cost recovery or a portion of it? So, you wouldn't have to do the full if you are as interested in doing a partial. And then also interest, you know, obviously, we provided a recommendation based on our experience and from what we see, but, you know, if there's any desire from council to change the service delivery or do things differently than what we're doing now, but here the fact that we have an opportunity to come back and bring you changes before the next meeting on December 10th. So, before we get into questions, this kind of gives you an overview of the timeline. You know, check marks obviously is what we've already completed. You know, we're here tonight to talk about the survey results and as far as the RFPs. And then, you know, we're looking for council to take action on December 10th with an intent to award a contract to the selected provider, if it is GFL, or if you opt to go with another provider, and then also to have action from council to determine if there's an interest in moving forward a solid waste user fee implementation. And then, you know, just as a reminder, the effective date of the contract would be July 1st, 2025, and this would be for a five-year contract. Our current contract is a 10-year contract, and certainly it is our recommendation to, and we issued the RFP for a five-year contract. So, at this point in time, I'll entertain questions and comments from council. And I did not see who went up first. I was not paying attention to that, so I'm not sure.
I believe it was Councilmember Fender. And then, I didn't see yours because it was sideways, so I saw Skarren Johnson and then Rabadi. That order's okay. And then, do you want me to help facilitate after that, or you've got it after that?
If you could help, yeah, I will, yeah. Yes, sir. If you could help.
Councilmember Fender, please.
So, my first question is, so I'm very, very glad to hear that you're not going to recycling every other week. Because, one, I think that sends the wrong message, that it's less important. And, two, like your audit showed, a lot of people's bins were full or nearly full. Which leads to my question. Can we get a larger bin for recycling, like the same size as our trash? Because for me, my recycling is, I bring out my recycling bin every week, and my trash every other week, because I don't need to. So, actually, I need a bigger bin for recycling.
So, both of them are the exact same size now, and they're both 96-gallon carts.
Is that for the new ones?
Minor, that's what I have.
It should be. If you have a different-sized recycling one, then...
Yeah, mine's smaller.
Yeah, we need to...
I have, they're both exactly the same.
They should be exactly the same size. They may be a different color, but they should be exactly the same size.
I feel really...
Yeah, but we could definitely, we could definitely...
I feel really stupid if I'm bringing this up and...
But, yeah, if it's not the same, then, you know, there's a, we need to get it rectified.
Okay.
Certainly address that if that's not the same.
Okay, all right.
That's a great issue to bring up, because if it is smaller, and you're using it more, then we need to fix that. And if you have a smaller one, maybe it's...
Oh, look again. Maybe I got that wrong. But, I mean, were, was the town giving out same-sized bins 12 years ago?
Yes. Well, they had little totes.
We had little, we had little bins that you could pick up with two hands.
12 years ago?
Yeah, and then we went to the big recycling bin.
Okay, maybe, um...
We didn't have, there was nothing in between, yeah.
Okay, I'll blame age. Yard waste, this has been bugging me. Because my waste, yard waste is picked up on the first and third week. Your presentation keeps saying every other week, which it's not.
You are correct. For full clarity, it is the first and third Wednesdays of the month, and second and fourth, as far as when it's...
Opposite.
Yeah, when it, yeah. So, when they pick up, so the fifth Wednesday of the month, there is no service.
Right.
So, there's five Wednes, oh, four Wednesdays throughout the year where there is no service for yard waste.
But if you just said second and fourth Wednesdays, it's to say... No, that's what I'm, that's not what I'm saying. Your presentation keeps...
I will, I apologize for any confusion from the presentation, but the website itself is very clear.
I'm looking at it right now. What I wanted to address, it's very different saying it's coming out, it's being picked up every other week, because it's not being picked up every other...
It's picked up plus a month.
Yes.
That's a more accurate way to say it, and I apologize.
And it's been bugging me, your stuff.
I apologize, but yes, you are very correct. It is, plus a month, yard waste is picked up.
Yes, thank you. And then, lastly, so do you think there's something specific driving GFL's cost down, or were they just aware that it was competitive?
One of the things that, we had a pre-bid, and one of the things that was requested from the pre-bid from the vendors that were present was what we were currently paying to our current vendor. So, that information was available. And so, I'm just speculating here, but I would anticipate that GFL knew that information was available, because they were a part of the meeting.
Right.
And that they did not want to lose the contract that they currently have. And so, they sharpened their pencil and came to the table to make a strong effort in trying to maintain the service of the contract that we have.
I'm glad it turned out that way. That's all I had.
Thank you.
Councilmember Skarren Johnson, followed by Councilmember Rabadi, please.
Thank you. I was pleasantly surprised to see that the contract bids were very similar to our current costs with the same level of service. I had heard, you know, through other means, other towns, that there was a lot of increase in costs. So, this is good news for the town, that we do have more of a stable cost basis for solid waste. I was wondering, since we did have a 10-year contract with our current vendor, there was only a five-year that's offered in our current negotiation. Was it even discussed to have a longer term?
We talked about it internally. I think what we landed on was the fact that, you know, you have automatic price increases built into a contract of a CPI increase. And I think over a 10-year period, those can escalate, and they start to build up and mount up. And I think, to me, industry standard, and talking with the different vendors as well, is that a much more manageable contract for what they accustomed to seeing in other municipalities is a five-year contract. So, that's the reason we went with that. We thought it was most advantageous to the residents and to our community, and we felt like it was the most economical approach and solution for our...
Kind of like renegotiating your auto insurance every few years.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. So, I also wanted to applaud the survey. 188 respondents is a lot larger than we've seen in some of the other surveys, so that, I mean, it'd be nice to see even higher response rates, but... other surveys, so that, I mean, it'd be nice to see even higher response rates, but still I do think it was, um, reflecting, uh, some of the current thinking, um, related to yard waste. I don't know if a third, um, container would be always able to fit in people's garages. The storage, um, issue with the third container might have been where some of the, um, responses were leaning towards versus a bag is very easy to store and, and to fill up. Um, so that was consistent with what I had expected. The, um, recycling result showed that we still have an opportunity to educate people on contamination. Twenty-three percent of the recycling, even though people are doing the right thing, they don't understand that certain plastics cannot be recycled, certain, um, waste cannot be recycled. Maybe they didn't understand this was the recycling bin. You know, there's just all different opportunities, again, to help people understand and appreciate recycling do's and don'ts. Towns do differ in what they can and cannot accept. Pizza boxes are the most controversial item, uh, in any town. Do you accept it? Do you not accept it? And it's exactly, exactly. But that's just an example of, a lot of towns consider that contamination, and you have a lot of cardboard there, so it's interesting. Um, I am going to pause on weighing in on the fee or not. I wanted to hear from the rest of the council, so thank you.
Councilmember Rabadi, followed by Councilmember Rao, please.
Thank you. Um, so I first want to weigh in on the fact that as a resident, I'm very happy with my service. I'm happy with the service level and I'm happy with GFL as our provider, so, um, plus their bid is more than reasonable. So I'm perfectly happy. I think that your recommendation to stick with them is a good one, and I'm very happy with that. Um, the second thing is, I was, since the, um, well, okay, the first, a hundred and eighty-eight responses to a survey, while it may be more than we're used to getting, like, we, I think we need to just rid ourselves of the idea that we're making data-driven decisions based off of a survey that was returned by less than one percent of the people involved. So, you know, I, I appreciate the charts and the graphs and everything, but I think that they give an, kind of an outsized, I don't want to say importance, because every bit of resident feedback is important, but they, I think charts and graphs like that give the impression that this is good data when actually the, the data frankly is meaningless in, in that amount. But having said that, um, I do think that the, I think it's a great idea to go around and survey the, you know, to send people around to look in the recycle bins. I think that's a really good idea because that's how you're going to figure out what's actually going on. So that was a really good, um, and innovative step. And, um, I think we should keep doing that, actually. You know, just, just keep spot checking different areas and, you know, just see how we're doing. Um, and then the last thing, I was wondering if you have it all considered or have an opinion on, since the contract is going to be this, almost the same price, maybe even a little less, um, what you would think of maybe instituting like, instituting a solid waste fee over two years? For example, ten dollars per household this year and the rest subsidized by the town, the, the nine dollars or whatever it is, next year, add in that other nine dollars.
You want my opinion on that?
Well, yeah.
Uh... [laughing].
Well, I guess I'd like somebody's opinion. I'd, I'd like somebody's opinion on that.
So I, I would say we can certainly entertain whatever you would like to do. It is fully your decision, you know, I think as maybe just a bit of history, you know, you will recall that this has been discussed on and off for at least three or four years that I recall, and it's gone back beyond that. But recent discussions, I think, have been focused around, you know, what our options would be, what that fee would recover. Uh, and so again, our team, our staff has done a lot of research on that, so the option provided would be to go with Wake County. That's part of the timeliness of the decision on that aspect of it now, is although it wouldn't take impact until July first, uh, the county needs to know that by early January so that they can prepare to include that in tax bills. Um, so hence, we're asking for, you know, ideally perhaps some consensus tonight so we can then bring you a resolution on December tenth, should you choose to take some step or, or the step in that direction. You had previously, uh, asked us to move forward a year ago, but the decision had come a little bit later than, than what made it viable. Um, so I had asked Jeffrey, um, to bring this back to you now as you're making your decision. Now we know what the new numbers are, so you know what you have for the next five years. So I think you can make a, a good informed decision as to whether or not you want to consider a solid waste fee. Um, and so again, realize that there are impacts from that because it is a fee that you're going to ask residents and others to pay, um, and also recognize that it is an opportunity, um, to sort of capture that approximately one point five million dollars that would otherwise pay for solid waste in the budget, uh, to instead be available as a, a new recurring revenue source for, um, for you to consider in your budget. So yes, you could, you could certainly suggest that you wanted to take two steps to introduce it over two years. Um, you could elect to just introduce it this July first and, and move on with it. Uh, you could, you could decide that you're not prepared to do anything this year, and we certainly appreciate that. Um, I think staff would encourage you to strongly consider a solid waste fee, again, reminding you we're one of only two municipalities in the county, uh, that do not utilize that fee. Um, so it's, it's, it is a tool that's used by most of our peers. Um, and again, it would be, um, it would give us a little additional flexibility in the budget process. Thank you.
Great answer, sir.
So it's up to us. Did you have anything else, Councilmember Rabadi? Okay. Councilmember, yeah, please.
I just meant, operationally, would it present us with any hurdles to implement the, the over two years?
No, I don't believe so.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Rao, please.
Yeah, just some thoughts to share with my colleagues. I mean, I, you know, I, I would rather phase it in over two years because, I mean, my concern is that, and I think it's also important that we, and I'm assuming there'll be an education process, but we got pushed back for going five cents above revenue neutral. I think that, you know, I've been looking at, you know, I know staff that I've spoken to have said that we could use the full amount of money for our own resources and services, but I think, I just feel like we need to be very transparent and open with the residents because we've heard from a number of residents that even though we, we, we didn't go that much above revenue neutral compared to other Wake County municipalities, that we increased, you know, that the tax bill was higher, that it went up by five cents. So I don't know if there's a possibility of, like we said, phasing it in or some kind of a nominal reduction in the property tax rate or something because we know, it's been subsidized and they're paying, you know, they've been getting that benefit for a long time. And now we're taking that away and we're saying, well, in addition to increasing the taxes, even though it's not really a tax increase, but the public is going to say that, now we're going to, we're going to do a fee and they say, well, it's not a part of your property tax. It's kind of is a tax because it's a fee. So I just want to kind of be really sensitive to that rather than just going in and rolling a full cost and then they're going to get, they're going to wake up and go, wait a minute, we just did this. And we just, I'm just circulating thoughts here of how we, of how we, you know, we have an opportunity here to show the residents that we've been listening to them, that feel like they're, you know, in a kind of higher costs and stuff that, that, you know, I just think we need to be sensitive to it. I don't know how you all else feel about it, but...
Thank you for sharing that perspective. Uh, Councilmember Johnson.
So I'll, I'll weigh in, uh, on the contract itself. Um, thank you for what you did. I think the way you presented everything in this bid process got us to where we are, Jeffrey, so I, I appreciate that work. Um, and I like the idea of a fine year, five-year contract because maybe we'll be in the same position five years from now where it is more beneficial to us, you know, it's, it's in our favor. So, um, um, so thank you. And I did, I wanted to ask about what the terms of the contract, but you answered that. It's going to be an annual CPI, um, increase. Okay. Um, as far as, and, and as far as what you've recommended for going with, um, GFL, with the, keeping the services at, um, a hundred percent in agreement, thank you for all the data and the information. Um, that, that was helpful to, you know, understand how, how, how much, um, each piece of this service the public's using, so I appreciate that. The bulk item pickup, I know, and I'm not looking to change anything on how we're proceeding today, but, um, with the new public works facility and then the newer Wake County, um, site, well, they, we'll, we'll have white goods right there, right?
Yes, ma'am.
Or we won't have white goods right there. We'll have the ability to bring our white goods right to that facility.
Correct.
Okay, okay. So maybe that's something to kind of circle back to, you know, a couple of years from now, um, because it's going to be really convenient for folks to do this on their own. I, I realize you need to lift an item into some kind of a vehicle, and we can have that discussion at the time, but, um, maybe we circle back to understand that service and, um, uh, I'm, I'm pleased with the results on the, the whole yard waste, um, because, um, you know, I, I wasn't, personally, I'm not in favor of leaving, you know, doing the, um, street leaf pickup.
Loose leaf collection.
Yeah, the loose leaf collection, thank you. So, um, and I, and I, I'll weigh in on the survey. I realize the survey results were, um, you know, we clearly would want more results, but I honestly think the results are reflective of this community. The results did not surprise me. So, yeah, a hundred and eighty-eight's not a lot. A hundred and eighty-eight's pretty good compared to everything else, all the other surveys we do, but I think it, it, um, it was not surprising to me. And I, um, what, what struck me as well, and I thank you for putting them, uh, in the presentation, were the, the, the six different questions about would you entertain this at a cost increase? And five of the six came back with overwhelmingly no. Um, so that kind of resonated with me, with me as well, so that's all I have input right now.
Mayor Pretend Caramella?
Can you pull back the, uh, the... This one or... Yeah. The one after that?
Yeah, I think, uh, so your, your assessment is, like, you know, with GFL as a, as a...
Yes, sir.
How much was our previous...
We're just under one point six million.
So...
Yeah, so we, the, our current FY twenty-five projected, uh, cost is one million, five-hundred-and-eighty-seven-thousand-two-hundred-and-fifty-two dollars. Uh, FY twenty-six with the new, uh, price would be one million, four-hundred-and-seventy-three-thousand-six-hundred dollars.
Are you understanding that?
Yes, sir. Down, less, less money.
What's the, what's the... Carry us to, uh, where...
Well, yeah, the, the thing is, I feel like what has driven the cost down is GFL did, their information and what they're currently providing, what they're charging the town, was available to every vendor, and so they knew they had to, uh, come in lower than what they were projecting, what they're doing now in order to maintain, keeping the contract. So for be a competitive bid, they knew they had to come down.
Okay, so...
The competition, competition forced that.
So for the sake of competition, they're taking a hit, is what I understand, because in theory, the costs are higher because the recycling cost has gone up. Is that correct?
Recycling costs have gone up compared to what they were, yes, sir.
Yeah, so when it comes down, so it's basically, they want our business, they played that.
Correct.
Okay. And you guys are happy with it?
Yes, sir. I, I, I have no issues, uh, with GFL. If I had concerns with the service levels they were providing, uh, I, I wouldn't have brought them forward to you for recommendation.
And, uh, how many complaints you get, uh, from the citizens or residents?
I don't know exactly what the number is, but, you know, it's...
Yeah, can we get that data over the last one, two years? You know, how many complaints we got?
We certainly can get that information.
Just, just, you know, I wondered, oh, how many trash pickups, uh, trash was not picked up? So those combinations, just to understand, because that would be a conversation to have for you all with them, you know, to say, hey, how do we fix this?
Yeah, and, and, uh, great point, great question, but one of the things that we did build into the, uh, well, part of this contract would basically be liquidated damages or basically, you know, uh, uh, financial implications for not performing at the level which it should be. So if they have a high number of complaints, then there's a penalty associated, associated with that, financial.
So what is that, uh, in the contract?
It was outlined in the RFP itself. Uh... And it's... And there's like twenty different items here that's listed. So I can, I can certainly, I can provide that information to council. Uh, but yes, for, you know, starting collection day before seven AM, going past the collection date, missing garbage, uh, or number of collections missed, uh, failure to clean up, spills, I mean, so there, it's, it's a kind of a, twenty different items there that, you know, we, we saw other municipalities had implemented something similar, and we felt like that was a good strategy.
And, and what is the life cycle of the, the garbage cans? I know, like, you know, at some point will they come and recycle all of them?
Well, well, GFL's current, uh, status is if you have a broken can, uh, their first step is to come out to make repairs, if it can be repaired. If it cannot be repaired, then they will replace that can.
So, so what I mean to say, um, that's their policy, but, uh, since we are continuing our contract with them, um, is there a life cycle of the trash can that has to be recycled?
There is no requirement as far as specifying the age of a, a, a recycle car or a waste car that needs to be replaced within a certain amount of time. One of the things that we did specify, because I think what we found when we were out looking was that some of the, uh, you know, carts still have the Waste Industries logo on them, and they're not, some of them are not clearly labeled, whether it's recycling or, uh, waste, garbage. So one of the requirements in the contract is that they have to, uh, clearly identify what can is recycling, what can is, uh, waste, as well as putting the GFL logo on cans.
Okay. So, so my last question is, I think we asked last time, was, um, how modern is GFL in terms of data collection of how much, you know, you, last time we heard that, they know how much the garbage truck is carrying the load, but not individual cans of recycling? Is there any, um, movement in their thought process of coming up with innovative ideas of, you know, hey, Steve is not recycling, you know, in last one year, is, you know, and it is less than twenty pounds versus his solid waste is this one? So at least we know it and of how it is going, so then we can encourage people to recycle more.
We do have RFID tags on the recycling cart, so we can tell who's participating in recycling and who is not.
But you have RFID, but does it weigh?
It doesn't, they don't have the ability to weigh it.
Exactly, that's what I'm saying.
They don't have the ability to weigh the car. And I asked them, could, you know, is that possible? And they're not, I said, not at this point in time. In the future, maybe, but currently, no.
Yeah, because the way I look at it, the moment you lift, lift up the weight, you know, then you can easily...
That's right.
...understand, you know, how much it weighs. So if they can have that technology, then that's just...
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
So I'll, uh, give my comments and then we'll circle around to the meat of the thing, whether or not we want to do the fee or not. Um, I appreciate all the hard work staff did. I applaud the staff recommendation. Um, I personally am surprised because anecdotally, I thought more people wanted loose leaf, but you guys did a survey and so, um, I'm supportive of everything you guys decided. So if council members are willing to weigh in on whether or not we want to go ahead and implement a fee completely, not at all, or phased, um, that would be where we are in the discussion right now. discussion right now, is my understanding. So, Councilmember Fender, followed by Councilmember Rao, and Councilmember Sharpton Johnson, please.
So I have a commendation first for the guys that work for GFL, because they've gone out of their way numerous times with picking up yard waste, because I've had my bags, I keep my, like, in between when they come, I keep my bags under a tree closer to my house, and I don't always remember that they're coming and take my bag to the alley, and they will always, if I've forgotten, they always pick it up, even though it's not been brought out to the alleyway. And even one time, I was, had been trimming my maple tree, and just, I got done with it late at night or whatever, and left all the branches on the ground, and, and they just happened to come that next day, and the guy got down and picked those up under the tree, and, you know, they definitely weren't cut down, they definitely weren't bundled, he picked them up and took them, and, which was, was, was great, was awesome. So I really appreciate the work that those guys are doing. And then lastly, I have a question. If we were to implement a solid waste fee, if we told you to go tonight, you said, wouldn't start till, well, this is what, my question is, if it start, does it start in July, but then it doesn't show up on their bill until next year, the end of 2025? Or January 2026? How does that work?
So I may have to defer to Jeannie for a second. So you are correct that if you were to, you know, at the December 10th meeting, adopt a resolution establishing a solid waste fee, we would communicate that to Wake County so they could add it to their billing, and that would be effective for July 1st for our residents or others that have that trash collection. So I believe it would come with their next property tax bill. Jeannie, am I on point?
That's correct.
So it'd be almost, it'd be a year from now, essentially?
No, you would get your bill at the end of the summer. You'd get your bill in like August timeframe.
It's about September is when you actually receive the bill, and you have to pay it before January.
That's right.
Yeah, by January, so.
Okay.
Otherwise you get a penalty.
So we would receive the funding in the fiscal year, which is allocated.
Okay. So, to weigh in, I'm in favor of implementing the, a phased two-step process of the solid waste fee, like Councilmember Robati suggested, and Rao.
Can we bring up that slide that shows the 226 for full sustainable? Okay, so, just to be really clear, are we talking about a 213 split in half, a 226 split in half? What kind of phasing is the council interested in thinking about if we're not doing one of those two completely, or not at all?
I would do half and half.
Half and half of the 226, of the 213?
Yeah, 226.
Is that what you need from each of us, pretty much, staff? That kind of direction?
I think it would be very beneficial.
And then we'll come to consensus?
Yes, sir.
Do you want to discuss more, or do you want to just take a straw poll right across?
I would like to talk.
Yeah, so, Councilmember Rao, and then Councilmember Sharpton Johnson. We don't have to.
I'm leaning more towards a phased, two, over two years.
So I'm not in favor of implementing a waste fee at this time. Most importantly, because we just raised taxes significantly, and secondly, because we don't really have an identified purpose for the fee that we are collecting. We currently have an allocated waste fee as part of our budget, and if we start adding a fee, what are we adding the fee for? What value are we returning to the residents of Morrisville? This has not been discussed tonight. This has not been brought forward. It's not really, you know, the job of Public Works to identify what the fee will be used for, but it is our job to have some good ideas, and I really don't feel like we are prepared to message that yet, so I am not in favor of a fee at this time.
Okay, Mayor Pretam Garamella, followed by Councilmember Johnson.
I think she is first.
Councilmember Johnson, followed by Mayor Pretam Garamella.
So, you know, I appreciate the conversation about a phased in, because I would 100% agree with that, if that's the direction of council. I will tell you, a year ago, or this year, at retreat, when we talked about this issue, I said it was something I wanted to discuss, and I was in favor of having that conversation. I too am not in favor of implementing a fee. I hear, I hear what Councilmembers Sharpton Johnson's saying about, I think we can message that, but I think that's important, too. I think, to me, what's more important is what I said before. Of the six items we put in here that we asked about, would you be in favor of this level of service at an increase in fee, you know, overwhelmingly, it was no. So, again, that resonated with me. What I get from that is that the public is not in favor of a fee for this service at this time at all in any way, and so I want to honor that. If I'm wrong, the public will, the public will come out on December 10th and tell me I'm wrong, but I don't think there's the appetite for a fee for this service at this time.
Mayor Pretam Garamella, followed by Councilmember Robati, please.
No, I think I agree in few of the ways, because I was a big proponent of these fees in the retreat, and, but when we put five cents as a tax increase, and now this is like approximately two cents, you know, you look at it whichever way you want, you know? It is, so.
It's one and a half. Because we're at 960 now.
All right, the full amount would be essentially a penny and a half. If you did a phasing, you would be looking at three quarters of a penny this year, and then the other three quarters the second year.
Yeah, I mean to say, we got to be very cognizant that the carry bond did not pass through. One of the main reasons is they were really ticked off with already existing taxes. We were lucky, we were in the double, like, you know, we were in the lower twenties, I think 17 or whatever it was, our increase versus Knightdale, which was 43, and Kerry and other things. So the sentiment of the people right now is pretty hard, no, to the taxes that we are putting left and right. For them, they do not get the whole thing. I can understand from the staff point of view, we are like transparent and showing what is where the costs are. That does not quantify to their sentiments in a way, because they are having fixed incomes, and I say fixed incomes, I'm not saying social security fixing, they are W2s or this one, it's not that they can go and work more, they can get more money. So, and, we have not taken the public input, because if Brandon is saying, December 10th you put it, and you tell the county, you know, do it, you know, it's like going so quick, and then people will come back, hey, we didn't have a chance to give a public input in here, because we took the survey, we did this, yes, great, we are coming below than what it was, but it, it'll not go very well, I'm telling you. Because this 226 is only going to get, it'll, it'll multiply, this is how I say it, because the reason I say that is, 226 goes to the owner, okay? The owner will do, push it to the tenants. They will not push 226. This is, oh, now we have to pay for the trash, or, you know, technically, that will be around 400, 500 bucks increase over a period of 12 months, because the tenant cannot pay trash, it is the owner who has to pay trash. So you're infusing, and every opportunity, like, you know, people get that sentiment of any retail, the oil, gas is like, you know, there's an embargo in Gulf tomorrow, the gas goes up 20 cents, and it will not come down if the embargo is removed. And so that's what the tenants, the owners will do, too. They will use that as a leverage to pull the trigger to increase. So that, that is, again, you know, something I'm really looking closely, because it's not just the seniors, I don't have an answer to it, it is for the other people to do it, because it spreads to different appetites.
Councilmember Robati, please.
So, I understand that tax increases are not popular with people, but honestly, sometimes it's our job to make the hard calls to get the things that we need for our town. And we can survey people until the end of time and say, would you rather pay for this or get it for free? And we will never find that the public has an appetite to pay more, and I, and, you know, I'm, the reason I'm in favor of a phased approach is because I'm sensitive to the fact that people's taxes went up, but I think that to compare our situation to Kerry's, when Kerry had a, that bond was, was 500,000? Was 500 million? Thank you. 500, that was a $530 million bond, after a 14 or something cents tax increase. The situations are not comparable, and I think we should not discuss them as if they are. You know, we, we made every effort, and we can't forget this, and we can't let the public forget this, that we cut that budget to the bone, that we did not get things that we needed and things that we wanted, because we were sensitive to the fact that we did not want to go as far above revenue neutral as we had originally proposed. So, I, I mean, I'm in favor of, it's 1885, I'm not actually even in favor of splitting it down the middle. I'm in favor of $10 this year, 885, the additional 885 next year, but I mean, we, I think we have to, we have to make this decision in a context of our capital expenditures plan, of the increase in our operating costs, of absolutely certain project cost estimate overruns, the town center, like, we, I mean, we've made commitments that we're going to do certain things for people, and, I mean, it's really, I, it's really hard, and, you know, I don't want to be the person that comes out and, you know, and says, yes, we need to impose a fee on people. Like, I don't take that lightly either, but the fact is, we can't, we can't just weigh this in the context of is it going to be popular? We have to weigh it in the context of is it going to be right and is it going to be responsible?
I. Did we cut you off before, sorry?
No, like.
Okay, then we'll have a second round in a second. Steve is the person in second round. So I pretty much agree with what Councilmember Robati said, that we have a lot of needs, they keep growing. Just meeting our staff needs to keep and retain staff pretty much uses up our natural growth, and we're trying to do more as a town. So I would be supportive of increasing our capacity. Staff feels that this is a good way to increase capacity. What the residents are getting for this is, they're getting their garbage picked up, they're getting their trash and recycling picked up, and we're allocating it directly to the people who are receiving the service. So that's what they're getting for it, and then we have more budget capacity to do everything else that we will start talking about in January, and that was talked about last budget cycle, those extra four cents that we were not able to find the capacity for last time, those are still there, and we still have other needs that have been growing since then. So I would support whatever the rest of the council is willing to do to implement capacity building measures, including this right now. I would go so far as to say, do the whole 226 right now, on the 10th. I don't think that we have support for that, so a phased approach would be appropriate, I think, if we can get. So if we could get a phased approach, I'd be in favor of that. Thing is, the window is closing, and we have talked about this for years, as a good way to build our capacity as a town, to do the good work and provide efficient services and programs. If we don't keep on allocating the resources, we're going to become less efficient, and we're going to be able to do less. So that's my thoughts on that. So everyone's gotten a chance to weigh in, and now we welcome the second weigh-in, so we can really come to a consensus and give staff some decision tonight. So Councilmember Rao, followed by Mayor Pretam Garamella.
Well, I mean, first of all, I was, when we were going around, I was, one of the reasons why I was only proposing a phased approach was because of the fact of being sensitive to the tax increase in the residents, which I said in my comments. I do agree with Mayor Pretam Garamella, though, that the only concern I have is the amount of time, that if we, if we move as quickly as December, there's going to be a lack of public input to do this, and people are going to come back and say, you know, we got, we just got a bill, an increased fee. I was always under the impression that if we did a fee, that there could be some, what have a tax reduction off the property tax rate, because I think that's the only fair thing to do, is to lower it a little bit, even though that's going to reduce our capacity. I think that if we were to do it, I think that's the only fair thing to do, whether it's, you know, a quarter of a cent or whatever, to address the concerns of people coming and saying that you, because if we, if we do it and we just add another fee without doing some kind of thing to the public. So that's just my thought. I'm not going to be here on the 10th, so, I mean, sharing my ideas. I mean, I understand the reasons for doing it, but.
Garamella, please.
Yeah, and just adding to what I had said, we don't know the next budget yet, okay? Is it with no tax increase, or with tax increase? We just don't know all those data. So pushing now, and then again, you know, if it is, that's also going to increase, that's not fair, you know? So, for me, I just want to have a whole picture, and I get with some of my colleagues, we did increase five cents, that was the highest jump that we have ever done, you know, we did the best we could, and for all the right reasons, and I stand for that. You know, if you're doing this, I would say, as Wiki said, what are we getting? And from Steve's point of view, okay, are you reducing the tax if you're taking two? Because everyone has their different opinions of how they view it, you know, so we will not have a good picture on 10th to basically say, okay, do it, and then, oh, you know, to be fair to Brandon, he does not know what the departmental request will come, and, you know, after, what will come up in our retreat, and what it is. So, too many parameters here.
Councilmember Sharpton Johnson, followed by Councilmember Fender, please.
So I appreciate Mayor Pretam Garamella's point about transparency. We're having a work session tonight. A lot of the public might not be really aware that we're considering a user fee, but they know that the contract is up for renewal, so some of this hasn't really been shared. We had a survey, but yet, a user fee that we're considering tonight and voting on, in a one-time meeting, I mean, that is fast. We usually have a briefing in a meeting that talks about potential change, and then we have a voting after. To do it on the same night is not appropriate, and all, and I understand the timing, but... And all, and I understand the timing, but it effectively, the public will perceive this as a tax increase. It's going to come on the property tax invoice. And to have that without any public input or a chance for them to understand that this is being considered in a one-meeting decision, I think is unfair to our public. And, you know, again, I understand capacity, but I'm still not comfortable with moving this ahead at this time. I am willing to talk about it at retreat. I think that there's a capacity issue of looking at the whole picture, all of the expenses as a budget. There is a due diligence process with the public in the budget process that we could then include this as an item for comment and feedback. And that process, I think, is a stronger, more robust process for this kind of consideration. Thank you.
Councilmember Fender, please.
So I do agree with Councilmembers Scroggins-Johnson in that this is, would be a fast decision in presenting it to the public. So I don't know if there's a solution there or a different path we can take. I will, I will say though, that I feel like we're in this vicious cycle because y'all have been talking about a solid waste fee since I got on the council six years ago or seven years ago. And it always seems like there's some excuse why we can't do it this year. You know, it's been, oh, we can't talk about it now because the contract is going to be up in two years. Oh, we can't talk about it now because we, we have the revow coming. And so we, we, and the timing is always off. We, we don't talk about it because, you know, we haven't gone to retreat yet. So I feel like we're just, we continue, we make up excuses of why we can't do it rather than looking at a way that we can do it. You know, is it something we could talk about at retreat and look at our budget holistically? It seem, I mean, does that, does that work logistically? It seems like every time this comes up, there's some excuse of why we can't implement it. The other thing has been, well, we got to talk to Wake County about it to get them to, you know, be able to accept payments. So we need to get off of that. We're stuck and we need to get off of where we are now. So Brandon, I don't know if you have a comment to that?
I agree with you. I think generally speaking, that that, that is sort of a cycle we, we have seen ourselves in, understandably. The information we have from Wake County is that they need this in early January in order to be able to add it to property tax rolls billing. Jeannie is going to talk to Marcus Kenraid tomorrow with Wake County to get a firm date. I do expect that we will hear that the retreat is too late. I think there, there may be a possibility that we could ask for action on January 14th. We'll have to find that out tomorrow from Marcus, you know, because they, they have their deadlines. So we could find that out. And then I would say if, if there's council interest in that and January 14th is viable, we could hold a public hearing on December 10th that would certainly be advertised duly. And then you could even hold that public hearing open until the January 14th meeting. I do think that January 14th would in all likelihood be the sort of extended drop dead deadline for Wake County. But again, we'll confirm that tomorrow and I can share that with you as soon as we have an answer.
But our, our retreat is after the 14th.
Right. Again, if you, if you feel you need to discuss this at the retreat, then I don't believe it's going to be possible to implement July 1st.
So how do we get out of this cycle? We have a retreat, we, we say we need to talk about this at the retreat along with the budget. But our, but you, this is, we've gone through this same discussion before. We've said, oh, well, it's too late to let Wake County know.
We have. And, and, you know, there, there is a challenge here of, I, I appreciate Councilmember Scroggins-Johnson's point that, you know, we don't know specifically what this would go to. Staff is looking at it as capacity. I feel comfortable telling you that we won't have the funds necessary to do everything that's asked for, but that's every year. But again, could, could the money be used on legitimate needs for the town and the community? Absolutely. I also want to recognize, I think, again, that Mayor Pretam Garamella agreed with this concept, that it is challenging to make this decision, which could be perceived as a tax increase before you have retreat discussions and budget work sessions and ultimately make a decision on what is FY26, you know, really in, in the May window. I mean, you probably won't vote till June, but I think in the May window, we generally have an idea of where we're going. So that, that is just, unfortunately, the way the timing works is, you know, you, you either have to make that decision now, we're potentially, you know, either December or January for July implementation, or you could theoretically make the decision, you know, later, but it wouldn't be for FY26. It would, it would likely be for FY27. So that, that's sort of the timing of it is not ideal, but that's the process and that's what going with Wake County looks like. Again, we, we have looked at other options. We don't feel that those other options are viable in, in terms of what we would like to do, in terms of internal billing or another partner did not work itself out to look realistic. And I would not recommend either of those options to you respectfully.
Did you have anything else to add at this time? Councilmember Johnson, then Councilmember Robati, and then I think my second round, and then we'll do a third round.
Okay, just a couple of comments. I understand the timing issue. I, that, you know, that it has, this decision has to be made before January so that that billing process can start. So I understand, but we're bumping up on the holidays and from the public's perception, it will be that this was forced through quickly during the holidays, when everybody's on vacation, everybody's busy. So that perception does not sit well with me. But again, I understand the timing. I understand that. And just like somebody said earlier, I understand why you're doing it, doesn't mean I like it. So understand why we're doing it, don't like it. My gut tells me when this comes on December 10th, it's not going to pass. So I would ask you to please bring this forward in two steps. One is to agree with going from with the contract with GFL and then bring the, whether we enact a fee or not as a separate vote, because I, I think that's going to fail. So you'll have to come back in January then, if you choose to. And, and I think you'll hear from the public. Between now and then, we'll hear from the public. And, and that matters to me. And you know, you know at the retreat, when we talked about what we were going to do about revenue neutral, I, I was, I was extremely vocal about what we were doing to the public and how we were going to affect them and especially folks that might be struggling with how they were going to pay their taxes. And I, I, I'm not going to repeat all I said. You all heard me. You were all there. And so I put this now on the heels of that vote. I, I put that, this now in that same, I look at that in that same lens now. And, and that concerns me, that we heard from, and I don't know about you all, but I, even since we voted on this current budget, I still hear from the residents about what that effect has had on them. And so this conversation matters to me. It matters deeply to me. It does not mean I'm kicking this can down the road. It means that I have a different viewpoint and I'd like my view to be respected and that I'm looking out for the residents.
Councilmember Robati.
So Liz, you did say, as did we all, that we cared about the effect that any tax increase would have on the residents. We all care about that. But you also said that one of your regrets, and you don't have that many regrets in your time on council, but you did say that one of your regrets was that, that there were opportunities to seize capacity that previous councils had not taken advantage of. And to me, like, this is, to me, this, I, I just, like, I get that, you know, I get that probably we're not going to be able to pass it, but actually, my larger concern is, did Wake County just spring this on us? Because my sense is that we had enough time to put out a survey. We had enough time to collect and, and do everything with that survey. And I don't understand why we haven't been messaging this to the public all along. Like, I don't understand why we didn't, we passed a budget in July that did not have a solid waste user fee in it. And to me, the day after we did that was the time to start preparing people for the fact that this, this was under consideration because it has to be under consideration at this point. And so like, I, I don't, I mean, I guess there was a, you know, there's probably a couple of months where we were like, no, we can't start talking about new fees now and, you know, and then there was, but I, I feel like, I feel like in July, my sense is, because what happened after the last revow, and we did not go revenue neutral in the last revow either, and my sense was that the following year, we were very reluctant to do a tax increase. And I 100% agree that this is going to be perceived by the public as a tax increase. But I don't think there's going to be appetite to do it in next year's budget, no matter how robust the process. So my sense is that we are again, I mean, that we're again going to be right in the same cycle because there is no good time to deliver news about a tax increase. And I hate it that people are struggling because of their taxes. I was taxed out of a home that I loved in Princeton, New Jersey, and that's why I'm here. So I, I don't make any decision about tax impacts or, or impacts to residents of increased fees lightly. And I could never be insensitive to the effect that that has on people. But I, I, I don't think, I mean, I don't think that we're going to find a time when this is going to be palatable to us, to the public over the next 12 months. And so I think that, you know, I think that by not doing it, we're saying that we are definitely not going to do it for another year. I don't see it happening in the next budget cycle. I just don't. So if we're happy with that, then, you know, I, I mean, obviously, we go with what the majority says and that's fine. But I, you know, I'll just say again that, that, you know, sometimes it's our job to break, to bring bad news. And we're also never going to be in a situation where we don't need that capacity. And I think that shortly, we're going to be in a situation where we need that capacity for operational expenses. So, you know, and, and we're not going to have it. And I don't, I don't want to tax people that are already struggling either. So I, that's not what it's about.
So I agree with what you said. I have a question for the town manager. What is, how soon do we have to tell them how much the fee is? Is it just, we need this line on the tax bill? That's the decision they need now?
I'm going to let Jeannie answer that for you. I apologize. I don't know if I know the specific answer. Mayor.
So from, from what I remember last year, and we've talked about this several times, and we didn't get the permission or authority to move forward to be able to communicate with the public, it was that we had to notify them so they can start setting up a line within their billing system to be able to put a fee. So I think it could come in a couple of steps, is notify them first so that they know what to expect, that a fee is going to need to be included, so they can work with their system engineers to make sure that, that space exists and they run their test, and then we can notify them of what the fee will be. But it will need to be fairly soon after January to be able to do that as well. So I can verify that with Marcus and make sure, you know, is what I'm saying true and in fact, and maybe get more clarity on when we have to give them a fee amount.
So that's, that's the point right there, because we have an ERU line. So now if we just add this line and we decide later, like when we give them the property tax rate, what the fee is, that gives us the opportunity to include this in our budget cycle and discussions. Because that's when we'll know what we're getting for all our invested resources. So this is a way to meet a lot of the needs that I've heard and a lot of the concerns. And then we will have a full picture about whether or not a fee is more appropriate or leaving this embedded in the property tax. So that would be something that we could possibly, as a group, authorize a 0% fee on the 10th. So we'd have that opportunity during budget. Because January is not, is that when we start to talk about the budget? That's not when we're talking about what we get for the, the money in the budget. That comes in April and May. So there's no real way to address the needs that I've heard until later in the budget process. It doesn't even happen at retreat. So that's just a thought that might meet a lot of the needs that I'm hearing and give us flexibility going forward.
But do we have to assess the fee if we ask Wake County to change their programming? It's now free for them to update their billing system.
Right. So if you could find out how much that cost is just adding that line, that would be helpful. I think it'd probably be worth a certain amount of money to give us that flexibility going forward, knowing that, that fee will probably happen eventually, just to help with our capacity. So that was my thought. You had something to add?
I don't think that it would necessarily be a bad thing if we're not going to do a solid waste fee this year. I don't think it would necessarily be a bad thing for people to have a solid waste fee line on their tax bill with a zero. Because I, I'm not sure that people are really cognizant of the fact that this is something that's being provided to them for free. And then, you know, if the next year, that fee is $10 or if it's $18 or whatever it is, I mean, I don't, I guess if, I don't think it would hurt necessarily to have the line on there.
I will ask with, if I can get ahold of Marcus to verify, there will be a cost to add the line. So you're not going to have a fee there. You still will be paying for that service. So I'll verify that for sure, but that's my general understanding. And I will also ask on the timing question of really implementing it with the system and then when is the last possible date to provide a fee? And I think that would help. Certainly, I think something I can bring back before December 10th, provided he's not on vacation.
Councilmember Fender, please. Or did you have something to add?
I just wanted to clarify. I think there's a third question in there is, can that fee be a zero or not?
No, I, I understand. That is, will be...
I want to listen to that because I heard a couple say that.
Councilmember Fender?
So I don't necessarily think it's a good idea to have that on the bill as a zero. As a temporary measure and then next year, it's, you know, whatever, 226. But, you know, I'm hearing what Councilmembers Scroggins-Johnson and Councilmember Johnson are saying, and I'm wondering if we could do it, do a third option, not, not vote, only vote on the GFL contract December 10th. Don't vote if we have that option on the solid waste fee. And then when we're talking... And then when we're talking about the budget from retreat to April, May, in May, we decide whether we want to implement a solid waste fee. And then it'll get implemented January 2026 with Wake County. Or you'll tell them January 2026 that you're going to implement a solid waste fee, which would go, they've, whatever, you know what I mean?
I do. So let me summarize, if that's okay, what I think I've heard and what a proposed path forward is. If every, I don't want to interrupt anybody if there's other thoughts.
It's being up right now. Ann, did you have another? Ann to Ann as well.
Yeah, for me, it's, it's all about, if you want increased taxes, increase, or whatever you want to put a solid waste fees, do it along with the cycle of the budget. Do not in the middle, you know, do this. I want to holistically look at the budget in May and figure out what to be done.
And that's exactly what I was proposing.
And, and last time, Brandon, if you recollect, you were right in saying you didn't have the numbers, you know? Exactly. So we, we went through, we actually are not kicking down the can. Last time, we all wanted it, but you intentionally said, "I do not have the numbers to basically say what it is. It is better we wait and then do it." So, so for, for me, and that, that was a fair statement. And now I think, you're not saying yes or no, but I want to really see the budget, it come along with the budget. So that way I'm, it's clear and it is transparent and people have time to wait.
Councilmember Robati, please.
So I don't, I love the showings in one week either. So, I mean, that seems like it is the most effective. So, I don't think everybody else is. Why? Talking about it during the budget.
Yeah, exactly.
The last three people who spoke, I said.
Including, including me. Okay.
And then Brandon wants to know January of '25 that they implemented July.
2026, so that's FY '27 budget.
Okay, yes. Okay. That.
Okay. I'd like to recognize town manager at this time.
Here's what I think I heard. So December 10th, we will bring you the GFL contract. I did not hear anyone unhappy with that. I think we're all very happy with where that turned out, much better than what I thought we would see. So that's good news, I think, across the board. So then Jeannie will make her best effort to reach Marcus tomorrow, recognizing it's the day before Thanksgiving. He may or may not be there, but I do think we could certainly reach him next week. The, the challenge comes is that if we are going to do a public hearing on the 10th, we've got to advertise that now, not next week. We, we need to get ahead of that, make sure we give it duly, duly notice it. Sorry, easy for me to say sorry, it's late. So what I would suggest we would do is if we go on the assumption that Marcus might tell us he could work with us and find out January 15th, I'm going to get there, give me, give me a second, that we would hold a public hearing on the 10th. If you were to consider adopting it for FY '26, then that would give you, the public hearing, the 10th, it would remain open until January 14th. You continue the public hearing to that meeting, and then you could consider, if you're willing to consider, taking action on what would be a solid waste fee for FY '26 in January. And then if, if we cannot make that notice to him on January 15th, if that is too late for Wake County, and we'll also affirm whether that notice has to be, here's what we're going to do, or do we just want a line that we could add to later, we'll clarify that. And, and as soon as we have that answer, we'll share that answer with you. I, I think what I've heard is if we can't tell him January 15th, it doesn't sound like we should bring you back a resolution for action December 10th. I think I've heard that that's not going to get support and is not necessarily what, I think I've heard at least four of you necessarily want. Please correct me if I'm wrong.
It sounds to me like we didn't want a resolution on this at all until the budget.
Yeah, the budget.
That's correct.
Multiple people have said multiple things, quite frankly, so.
I'm, I'm trying to sort through. So that's the other, if, if you do not want to make a decision now for FY '26, then we will just confirm with Marcus, is there, is there a thing, such a thing as a blank line with no fee associated with solid waste? So it exists and, and what that process looks like, what that cost is? Is it worth doing that if we're not going to do a fee? And then I think you could certainly have additional conversations as a part of the budget process, but recognize at that point, you would likely be in an FY '26 budget discussion, but potentially approving a fee for FY '27, which I think you have the authority to do. It, it just means that a future council could undo that if they so chose when that budget discussion came around.
But that would also give us the opportunity to implement a fee for FY '26 if we can tell him the line will exist, but we don't give him the amount until after or part of our budget discussions.
Maybe. We, we have to confirm that.
So it's just that, at this point, do we need any kind of resolution or to come back to just have that line? Is that something that we need to have a brief about, or is that something that you can just sort of find from us under consensus if it's under a certain dollar amount to have the line so we have the option going forward?
I think that's very speculative. I would really urge you to have some time to look into it.
I, I think if we did find that out, and, and that was possible, was not what we might define as unrealistically expensive, we could certainly then bring a resolution, you know, either the 10th or in January, just to create the line. And then, again, we need to get the answer on whether that gives you the flexibility to later inform them of what that number would be for FY '26, so you can discuss it as part of your budget discussion in the coming months. I, I think that's what I'm hearing is not a lot of interest if you have to decide on it prior to the retreat, minimally prior to the retreat. But if we can secure the line and you would be able to tell the county as a part of the budget process, when we update them on any ERU, not suggesting there's any, I'm just, we, we tell them every year whether or not that would change, and then we'd have to tell them what your adopted tax rate is. So we'd have to confirm if we could then also tell them what your adopted solid waste fee is. That would give you the flexibility to discuss that as part of the FY '26 budget discussion that would kick off at retreat. I think I'm hearing consensus around that approach. Nobody's committing anybody to anything as far as a solid waste fee, other than to discuss it as a part of the budget process, if that can happen with Wake County's rules. Is that?
Well, I am not committed to adding the line on the property tax at this time. I want to hear from Jeannie.
Yes, I'm sorry, yes.
Right. And I, and I am still not convinced, even if it's feasible and not expensive, that we should do it for a number of perception reasons. And, you know, we still need to let the public have an opportunity to digest and, and give us feedback in general.
Appreciate that. So I, I think, you know, we're going to ask Marcus a number of questions. One of those questions is going to be, has anyone ever done this before? Has anyone ever advertised a line and not associated a fee with it for some period of time or perhaps ever? So we will gather as much intel as we can from Marcus, and we will share that with you as soon as we have it. There, there's some possibility it could be tomorrow. There's also some possibility it might not be till Monday or Tuesday of next week. So again, I, I don't think that, thinking back through this, I think all that's fine because, again, if he were to say you could create the line and we could tell him by January 14th, that gives you the opportunity to discuss it again the 10th, if he wanted to, before we brought you any action. The only exception is if he says, "Yes, you could add a line, but I've got to know by January 4th," then we would have to help you talk through this at December 10th. But we would have that additional information, I think, to inform your discussion. There's Marcus.
That's a good path forward. Can we wrap this up?
Okay. I think there's consensus to wrap this up. Thank you for the summary.
I mean, I, I think we have what, what we need to move forward. Jeffrey, do you have, you need?
Yeah, what you need, gentlemen?
Yes, sir. Yes, sir.
We do. I just want to thank you for the conversation. It's very helpful for us to hear not only what your decision would be or what your consensus would or wouldn't be, but the reasons why. And it helps us craft what we do going forward. And I know several of you, thank Jeffrey, and I just want to add to that because he and his team worked very hard to get this, this RFP out, the contract in, figure out all these things, so we could inform you appropriately and, and help inform the discussion. So, thank you, Jeffrey and your team.
Yeah, digging through recycling bins, that's above and beyond. So, thank you for that.
I didn't make anybody, they volunteered.
They volunteered. Okay. Is there a motion and a second, anything for the good of the order, sir, before adjourn?
No, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion and a second to adjourn?
Motion.
Councilmember Robati with the motion, Mayor Pretend-Garimello with the second. All those in favor of adjourning, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, that carries unanimously 7-0, it is 10:02, we are adjourned. Thank you all. Happy Thanksgiving.